Best intro on Twitch, thank you. 6am RP on HFT, God bless this man, yeah. I um... Have a little bit of waking up to do. Bear with me. Oh fucking, I'm late for the... Eating. Just wanna get rid of some of this shit here. Um... This is tight, but whoops, that's it. Oops, fuck. Alright, nothing illegal. Get that... Hey. Fuck. Okay, let's bounce. Uh, oi, my name, how you doing? Megan, hello, hello. Uh, people, people better be showing up here, I fucked up a raid, really? Well, thank you, appreciate that. Um... You wanna try again, you'll, you'll uh, come up on the credits. Oops, wrong one. At the end of the stream. Um... But I mean, that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't matter to me, I appreciate it. Nonetheless. How was your stream? I saw a little bit before I um, when I forced myself a couple of hours sleep, which I'm really glad I ended up doing. But it's so hard to fucking... Wake up after a two hour sleep. Do you ever get to the point where you're like, "Oh fuck, I gotta, I gotta be up in two hours, fuck it, I won't sleep"? Cause you just know it's gonna be impossible to get up. That's what I almost did. Everyone's parked the wrong fucking way. No, no, wait. No, they're not. That's just a bit deceiving. Should park next to Suzie there. I mean, if Lachack can park there, surely I can. He's on, I mean, that's technically on the red, surely. Megan, thank you so much for the sub. Continuing to give subs, uh, they go from Ratslayer, thank you very much, appreciate that. Um... Artificial Meg Raid, hey, it's a, it's a raid nonetheless. Did advertise 9pm, possibly starting later, by the way. Yes, yeah, uh, we got a um, city council meeting first, that starts at 8. So um... Uh... Ah, this isn't gonna go very well, I can't even, I can't even think. So yeah, we're, I'm at City Hall right now, uh... No, not that fucked, we're having, we're having a city hall meeting in the park, and then uh... And then we'll have the Community Meeting. Uh, I think it's Legion, I think she said Legion Park, and I guess Lachack just came in here. I see where they are, I'm gonna pretend like I don't, maybe. Okay, we'll give it a sec. Um... You were in Meg's stream like 3 hours ago, did you sleep at all? Yeah, that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's Town Hall, yeah, yeah. Fucking Flas, uh, hello? Yes, hello? Hi, Mayim.
So, sorry, one second Roger, Daniel, are you going to this meeting?
Yes, where the hell is it?
It's in Legion Park, read your email.
Ah, I am, I... Alright. Oh, shoot, hi Henry.
Yes.
Yes, well, I'm here now, right? I mean... Okay.
Scrapping launcher.
Okay. Oh, Legion Park, oh yes, that must've been right here.
Henry, I don't need to call you out, but you are ruining the circle slightly. Wonderful, so I think we're just waiting for Reginald, I'm not sure, does anyone know if Tom's coming?
What?
Does anybody know if Tom's coming?
I don't know. How are you all doing?
Do I have to do everything myself, so I'm gonna try and give Tom a call, or? I have his number.
Ask your secretary.
Who's my secretary?
You wanna go to secretary?
Well... I've got Keith at the office, but we're not on the best terms at the moment, you know, he nearly got me killed, but anyway. Let me try and call Tom.
Oh, Mayim, you look like uh... What do you look like? You know what, you look very nice.
Thank you, another one of our two creations.
Yes, head of the, head of the Gaius.
Well, do we wanna wait for Reginald, or do we just wanna kick off?
I'd say we give him a few more minutes.
Yeah, yes.
Right, can we, can we sort the circle out whilst we wait, cause it's um... It's just not working for me. Roger, could you uh...
We're a little close to the road, right?
But I, I feel like we're quite central.
Right, well, uh, it's a little lay out.
Have you got any other suggestions? Any other suggestions where we should have this meeting?
Why, why are we not just at the...
Yeah.
At Town Hall?
Oh, you know, it's just... Oh, why do the same thing every time and expect different results, you know? This might get our creative juices flowing. No, no, not um... We're not, no, we're not, we're not going, we're not, we're not doing this in the, in the town hall.
Wait, that's not how you spell flies, is it?
So, it's a nice day for it at least.
Very true.
If there was any businesses open, I could have checked if they would house us, but you know... Bit, bit last minute and all. Anyone, anyone got any ideas where we could have a meeting?
Oh, I mean...
I know you've got a stick on you. It's up to you, like... Oh, it's moving.
Oh, to fu- oh, fucking hell, oh yes, this is uh... No, this is the perfect spot, Mayim.
Are we all in agreement, this is the perfect spot? Don't want anyone bitching about me behind my back, you know?
It seems perfectly fine, so...
Okay, good, good, good. Uh, Henry, um, you're gonna have to take minutes, please.
Hello.
Reginald really knows how to take his time, doesn't he?
That breeze has quite the chill.
Yes, well, get used to it.
Yeah, it's right.
Stand up if it'll make you feel warmer.
No, I don't wanna ruin the uh, the circle, right?
Okay, well...
Hey Kate, how are you? Thank fuck. Did try again, but it wouldn't let me, yeah, no worries.
Oh, you hear, yeah?
I'll, I'll put it in manually. I'll have a sip as a pity, right?
I can see you, probably all... Grab a launcher.
Yeah, yeah. It's alright, we could've slept for a loo- uh, an extra 5 minutes.
I'm sorry, you've been covered in the minutes you relate, you don't...
Hey Cass, it's true, it's early enough for me to watch, yeah, it is very early, isn't it? Flies, yeah, I'm a fucking idiot.
It's nice to get out of the office for a little bit, right?
Call the chuckle laser. Why am I not quite liking up there with the staring glass window? Oh, I love that.
It, it just, just fills me with horrid memories of nearly dying, so you know, we're just gonna...
You ever heard of a thing called exposure therapy?
Oh, no, no, that's nonsense, that's nonsense.
Okay.
Whatever we need to call it.
Well, there's plenty of bushes, you know? Is it illegal to pee in a bush, Roger? Is that against the law? Suppose it's just spicy water, right?
What?
I mean, I think it's good for plants, it's high in nitrogen.
Roger, can you just speak, like, I can't hear you from over here.
I'll raise my voice a little bit.
Well, it's probably okay for uh, ladies, right?
What? Lachack?
What?
Um... Is it, is it legal for ladies to pee in, in the park? On the grass?
No, nobody, nobody should be peeing.
It'd be more legal.
I know morally it's not, it's frowned upon, but actually, is it okay? Like legally?
It's possible you can, can get charged with decent exposure.
Henry, Henry, um...
You interrupted me.
If I, if I peed in the bush over there right now, would I get arrested?
Uh, well, it'd be indecent exposure, as Chuck would say.
Oh, you're so smart, Henry, thank you.
What if, but I mean, what if uh... She aims at uh, into the bush, right? If she squirts down? You'd be squatting down, right?
I don't, I don't think it's about where people see the pee, it's, it's more about the act.
No, the, no, but I mean... Am I crazy? I feel like a vagina's more concealable than a penis, right?
I don't, I don't need a um...
Stop, stop the penis.
I don't need a wee.
Right, okay.
To be honest, I'm pretty sure there's some businesses over there that they'll let you use the toilets if you were desperate, Daniel, so, or... I'm sure there's, oh, there's an empty coffee cup over there, you know, choose one of those.
Oh, yeah, it's right.
Yes, and the coffee cup is also in the park.
But you, but uh, I mean... It wouldn't be indecent, right? It might be indecent, it won't be exposure.
If it, if it happens, let's just do that instead, okay?
Well...
Is that okay? Thank you, okay.
Well, it's natural, right?
Right, let's go over last month's meeting notes then, so... I was first on the agenda, now... Quite ironic, really, we're having this conversation, it's a bit like after the fact, but we talked about me having a security team.
Yes.
After I was taken hostage the first time during that bank truck robbery, and then someone just walks into my office and put a gun at me, so... Um, but now I have got Victor, uh, I can't remember Victor's surname.
Uh, Kerbage, I believe.
Yeah. My first impressions are... He's good when he's not in a crisis, and yeah, I'll probably need to talk to you about that, Henry, because uh, my life was threatened another time, but we'll discuss that separately. Uh, and then I was gonna get a makeover, which I guess did happen, didn't go as expected.
No, it went perfectly, and you're just too blind to see it.
Uh, Daniel, we both know that's not true, he's done it.
No, no. The price that came from that thing.
Do we wanna talk about how you tried to poison me with a banana nut muffin, or?
Who, my?
What?
Oh, did no one know, did no one know about that?
Okay, that's slander, Mayim. That's a harsh accusation, that I've uh, categorically, excuse me?
Please uh, please fill us in, what, what's this occasion?
Okay, the lady was having a crisis, right?
No, excuse me, I'm talking now, Daniel, okay?
Oh, okay.
Now, it's, it's quite well known that I have got a severe nut allergy. It's not a secret now, is it?
No, yes.
It's really not a secret, Daniel.
Do you know what I ain't a secret, my... Do you know what I ain't a secret?
What's that?
The nuts on top of the muffin. I wasn't concealing the nuts, they was there for everybody to see, I didn't know you had a nut allergy.
Daniel, I was drunk out of my mind when you gave me that muffin. You could've given me a shit between two bits of bread and I would've eaten it.
Right, so it's my fault, okay?
Well, not really, I would've actually eaten a shit sandwich, it was just an expression.
Right. So, cause you were too drunk, the uh, it becomes my fault, right, right? Who has a nut allergy? Excuse me?
Who gave me the muffin?
I did.
Why, could, could anyone else please tell me, if you were buying a muffin for someone, where you didn't know whether they had an allergy or not, would you buy them a banana nut muffin? Or would you play it safe?
Hello, Tom?
Hey.
Oh, shoot, yes, I told.
Hi, hi there.
Were you just walking through the park, Tom, did you know this is happening, or?
You in a bin raid.
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're ruining the circle a little bit, Tom, can you just? Come in a little bit.
Scoochy in the bed, right?
To be honest, Reginald, you're not making any sense at all.
We might have to raid this, yeah, yes. Okay, we're looking at an oval now.
Right, I don't wanna make this city council meeting all about my uh, near-death experiences, okay, so let's just move on. Uh, so...
Yes, boys.
I finally got Henry's parking spot set up, there you go, Henry. Look at that.
Yes, wonderful.
See, I get things done. Still need to attend a, a Town Hall meeting, maybe I can do that one tonight, actually.
Yes, we're gonna let everyone light up.
Oh, Tom, this, this is for you, um, I was supposed to explore the logistics of getting more cats into the city to address the rat problem we're having. A lot of people seem to be getting bit by rats. Um, can you, can you gather some cats, the strays that you find along the way, please? On your bin route?
I mean, I, I don't really wanna get near animals, cause, I mean, cats are bigger than rats, it can be dangerous.
Yeah, I just want you to herd them.
Who the fuck's that?
Herd, herd, herd cats.
Can you make that an action, Henry, for Tom to herd the cats for the next town meeting?
Those skates are so loud.
Just put them in a safe place. Get at least about 50 if you can.
I thought you already done diet, cause we found it.
You can uh, put them in, Tom?
I, I probably could find a big bit, like, bin or something for them.
I, I don't think we could, we should be putting cats in bins.
No, that'll be animal cruelty, I'll do that.
How you gonna feed a cat, cat of, to cat? Take care, save.
The rest of the businesses have got any leftover food you can give them? Like, at the end of the day?
But ain't they gonna be eating the riots?
Oh, yeah.
That's the whole point, right?
I know, but they might get a bit bored of the rat diet, so we need to give them, we need to give them other stuff.
No, don't. Cats will be fine on a rat diet, blame me.
Right, well, you do what's best.
Okay, Mayor, I'll, I'll look at these, these cats for you.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, who wants to go first then? I've not really got a particular order to do this in.
Hell, man, I don't mean going first.
That skater really is quite uh... Quite layered.
Yeah.
You hear them skates?
Yes, it's a public park, Daniel, there's not much you can do about that.
Yeah, it's, I know, I know.
Is there anywhere else you wanted to go for this meeting?
We here, right?
For the last time?
Love the fresh air, love this.
Well, I do know another place we could go.
Right.
But it would involve taking our shoes off.
The church?
No, um, well, it would involve taking our shoes off and rolling up our trousers, like. Shall we do it? Well, actually, Tom, you might be okay, but shall we be a bit adventurous?
Um, well, it depends what you mean.
Where, where is the location?
I'm gonna show you a place where no one else has been, okay? It's a secret place, and it's only members of the city council that get to know about it.
Right. Do you need a... Okay, I mean... You're the boss.
Right, everyone, shoes off, trousers up.
I mean, these jeans are quite...
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Can I, can I keep them, can I keep them on till we get there? Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, so, actually, I think I made you the same, um, you know, dog shit with more shoes on.
Alright, cheese.
Come on, let's jump. Let's get excited, come on.
Okay, I think there might've been some kind of uh...
Uh, no, 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 no.
Alright, I'll, I'll look, they drained all the blood out.
It was dying, the blood. Nope, I'm not.
Oh, yes. Oh, shit.
Yes, no.
Oh, back to the sewer where she lives, right?
Oh, god.
Okay, uh...
I don't want to uh, I don't want to cast this person's, but is the mayor okay?
No, she ain't.
Yes, I am wondering, maybe um... She might be doing a medical check.
Yeah, yes.
I don't think I'm going to the sewers.
I'm, I'm not going in there, Suzie. It is a little um... No, no, it's, it's disgusting, I'm not going in there.
I'm gonna go around and have a look.
We should be above ground at the very least.
Uh, well, listen, nothing is going to improve my morale getting uh, all damp and disgusting. I thought maybe we had a building we could use?
Yeah, yes.
For the city council members, we could, we could call it City Hall.
Yeah, yes.
Something, something like that. Yes, I've been pulled away from my work, usually I just have to go upstairs. And we could have a room with a large table where we could all congregate. I've got something for you, while I watch here.
Tom went in as well.
People be, you know, people go through the cars here as well, while people in the park, they break in the cars, steal their change out of the, out of the console.
Pizza, this menu, that's um... What? Oh, no, wait, oh! Oh, that's fantastic. And that is honestly fantastic, Henry, thank you very, very much for that. Little bag there, it should uh, help uh, clear up any issues you have going forward. Absolutely brilliant.
So the mayor's traumatized, right?
I really love the seal there, yes. I'll go over, I'll go over there, but I, I'm not, I'm not going in that bloody water.
I think I've been bitten by about a third of mosquitoes. Out here.
Those are coming in your hometown?
Sorry?
Make you feel nostalgic, but not uh, like a, a thing where you've gone from, like loads of mosquitoes?
Yeah, yes, yes it is, and I can't stand it, whenever I'm the one outside, they all go for me, something about my blood, they put fire.
Well, thank you for your sacrifice then, I suppose.
Well, yes. Okay, you know, well, maybe uh... Would it be, would it be out of line to uh... Maybe uh, we, we in state, one of, one of us becomes temporarily mayor perhaps, right?
Don't be ridiculous, don't be ridiculous.
Right, did she go in though?
She's right behind you, Daniel.
Oh, Daniel, do you wanna be the mayor, do you?
Oh, she, no, I wasn't, I wasn't saying Mayo. It's my accent. I was talking about it to the month of Mayo.
Right, shall we, shall we reconvene at the, the police station perhaps, but we, we have a room for uh, for meetings? Instead of uh, instead of going down there?
Yeah, no, we ain't going down there, Mayo. It's a joke, right? Mayo?
I didn't realise I had such a... Oh, never mind, uh, let's go.
We just like it above ground, it's all dry.
Is everyone okay, Susie?
I'm fine, Roger.
No, Susie, right, you gotta.
I'm Reginald, Susie. Is she really okay? Wait.
Susie, Davy Trout's dead, right, there, he's dead, you won.
Wait, is Davy dead?
Yes, yes, the man passed.
Ding dong, baby's dead.
All right, Mayo, Mayo.
No one likes the sole winner.
The people who heard you say that shit the other night, down at that new pub, they really ain't happy with you, right? You're, you gotta cut it out.
Wait, are we going back to the old spot or are we going to PD?
No, we're going to PD.
No, right.
Where else would you suggest we go? Cause all you've been doing is complaining since you've been in the park.
We could have gone to the church, we could have gone to a hotel, we could have gone to the PD, we could have gone to the.
A hotel?
Here, and they, yes.
A recycling center?
I know a fabulous hotel we could go to, oh, yeah, you see, this is uh, you know what, no, let's stay here, this is the best spot I could think of, to be honest. I think there's a bit of a leak in the roof, but shit, I mean, we can deal with diet. Oh. Oh shit, so we might get pneumonia, but shoot, I can deal with diet.
You're talking a lot to someone who's been given a disciplinary, Daniel.
Excuse me? I'm bald.
Sorry, we'll be on a disciplinary.
Wha- what for?
Nothing, this is unprofessional to talk about.
Right.
Where the fuck is my car? Oh.
Yeah, I dropped.
I think my car's around the other side.
It's over, I can see it from here, right? My lord.
Fucking salt.
All right, after you, Tom.
Where are we going?
PD.
Oh, okay.
Apparently.
Oh, I'll see you there then, father.
All right, drive safely, please. This car's gonna. Hold a bit in the rain. Jeff's fun activity manager voice trying to take the counter down into the sewer was amazing. She has lost her mind. Next one. Asshole. Oh shit.
As soon as I stayed in, say, hold. Bye. This is an absolute false.
Yes. We should buy you, oh shit. Had it?
An earth?
You're. Okay.
Look, I emptied the bins everywhere.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I think you're a garage door, oh, really, you smashed the front of my car.
Oh, uh, sorry about that. Where is the mayor? All right.
I seen it, uh, she might be at the other entrance, right? I seen a car down there.
Right, I, I didn't know you forget getting yourself in. Ah, well, uh, well. It is uh, it is absolutely secure, Susie, but we will be up there shortly.
She did call me Roger as well.
Uh, Susie's already, Susie's already upstairs somehow.
She's here, how did she get?
I'm not sure.
What does she?
Yeah, I, I just, I just waltzed into the police station through that door, cause it was unlocked, so.
Right.
Good to see that butcher's going to. Criminals go, Roger, is it not?
Where are we going to? I was going to use it downstairs meeting room.
Oh shit, this is where they would have had, this is where they would have heard David Trout. Right before his death.
What, he died here?
No.
He died here?
Rumor has it you can still hear his screams. On a cold night.
Shut up, Daniel. Look, Davy Trout didn't die here, did he?
Are you superstitious?
Bothered he or not, someone tell me.
No.
Where, where's your bins about?
Somewhere.
Oh shit. Did anyone bother bring them uh, lone chives?
Uh, there should be some cheers in the corner.
Oh. Here's one. Excuse me.
Right, um, okay, this is a bit different, but, but this isn't quite Luton Park, is it?
It's not quite City Hall either.
It's as much better than a park, right? We're sheltered here.
If only we had a room dedicated to um, city council meetings.
I'm not going in that, I'm not stepping foot in there, okay?
You have to, you're the fucking mayor.
To do it.
I think we might have to falter, right?
I get to choose where we have these meetings, and do you know what, I might even change where City Hall is, I might change it.
Okay, now you're talking crazy.
I might source a new building.
Oh, right.
Well, then we just become the courthouse.
Hmm, I think we should just burn it down, to be honest, but yeah.
Well, I'm, I know.
Do you have the money for that sort of thing?
Oh, no, we don't, because you wanted us to spend it all on coats, that was it, yeah, anyway. Who is uh, who wants to go first?
I don't know.
I, I have something to bring up.
Oh shit, I'm quite hungry, is all.
So, we've had uh, a lot of arrests recently, uh, involving drugs.
Oh shit, yes, thank you.
And before, like, about a month ago, anything involving drugs, it was just involving weed, just class B drugs. But things have changed, there seems to be a huge amount of uh, of coke, just moving about the city. Uh, at the moment, we're not sure if it's uh, being manufactured in here.
Back there in evidence.
We, we do, yes, locked, locked up in evidence.
Yeah, it was a joke to say like, oh, get someone.
Right.
Just a joke, though.
But um.
Do you have any uh, maybe some uh, antacarcosis medicine back there, Luchok?
No, this is not a hospital.
Oh, yeah, it's shit, right.
Daniel, maybe you can put your top back on?
It's sulking way, it's sulking way it.
Do you have anything to straight round the shoulders, Roger, please? Can you give him your coat or something?
No, I'm okay, I'm. I'll get it.
I could, I could show you to the locker room if.
No, that's okay, I'll put my wet coat on.
Right, sorry, yes, Chuck, you're talking about drugs.
Right, so. At the moment, it seems like uh, there are some gaps in the penal code. That need uh, changed a bit, so, first of all, we do have a charge for just um, possession. Which if someone has less than five bags on their person. And above uh, above the amount of bags, or whatever. Thing we're using to quantify the amount of drugs that they, that they own. Um, the charge would be possession with intent to sell, because it would be an amount higher than personally used.
Yeah.
Uh, however, the charge itself says intent to sell, there isn't a separate one for actually selling. So I think we should have one that's uh, we either adjust the possession with intent to sell. To include selling as well, or we add a separate charge.
Well, how would you prove selling?
Well, uh, we respond to the early reports of selling and we try to get evidence, photo evidence.
Okay.
So we need actual evidence, so, do you think there should be a separate charge or?
I don't mind, I'm fine with either. Anyone got any strong objection to it being two separate charges?
Hmm. I'm unsure, I mean, catching someone, even if they have just a small amount. Would uh, allow you to up the charge, even if they didn't have like a large amount that you'd expect for distribution, yes?
Well, it, it would depend on the evidence, right? Like if we have below the amount for intent to sell, it would just be possession. If it's above the amount, then whether it's intent to sell or selling would depend on whether we have evidence that they were selling or not.
Yes, no, it's, it's not, it's quite, it's quite difficult to, to gather these photo evidence of people selling, right? Requires like a stakeout or such.
Yeah, that's, that's what we usually do for um, for reports of uh, drug selling. Try to get photo, like once we respond, we don't uh, try to. You know, the detectives are on it, but basically, should we have it just be the same charge? And it would apply to the higher amount and selling?
That's, that's obviously it, yes, but uh, but I understand.
So you adjust the name then?
Yes, perhaps, yes. Like uh, like, like intention to sell slash selling, because uh, e- either way, you know, you're, you're guilty of the same thing, I guess, like if you have that much on you, then you're obviously going to sell it, so. You may as well, like.
Suppose, yeah? So the. That does make sense. Okay, so we would then just change the description of any penal code and name, now the second issue is that. Uh, obviously, the, that charge, if someone has ten bags on them, that would be, it's a charge of, I believe, um, four thousand, around that number. Uh, a couple of those arrests have been people with hundreds of bags and bricks on them.
Oh shit, okay.
And unfortunately, we had to charge them with just that standard charge. Which was uh, yeah, like just merely three to four thousand for having three hundred bags of cocaine on them.
Yes, and also the confiscation of the cocaine, right?
Yeah, of course, so.
Sounds like you've got a lot back there.
Should we have uh, like some sort of new charge when the quantity is excessive?
What, like manufacturing drugs?
Well, there is a manufacturing charge, but uh, according to the penal code, it needs uh, prove that the word, the manufacturer, like having equipment or. Uh, their property having equipment, uh, or evidence of manufacturing. But I was thinking, maybe it could be like a drug trafficking charge. And we would uh, base it on a certain amount, like over a hundred, for example.
Seems fair to me, yes.
Yes, I would uh, I would be on board with that. So what number should we put that call at?
Well, uh, how many people have you found with over this sheer amount on them? Is it a very common occurrence?
Three people, three people so far, which is.
That's quite a lot.
It's quite a lot, yeah. Most arrests people would have. Yes, uh, one of them had three hundred. Right, perhaps a, perhaps a hundred, a hundred increments? Yeah?
That's fair to me, yes, not, well, I can't imagine what anyone would do with a hundred bags of cocaine, that's not kill, well, many men, I assume.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like we're just talking about a Band-Aid solution, right? I mean, what about some kind of uh, secret task force? Find the source and eliminate it.
Well, the, the detectives are working at the moment on finding out the source of it, but uh.
Yes.
Should you need any warrants or anything, just come to my office, I'll uh, I'll look through the details.
Yeah, of course, but these things, you're always gonna find one and a new source is gonna pop up, so we need something like that charge to keep things in uh. Uh, looking check for now, but yeah, we are working on trying to find out the source.
I think some kind of uh, awareness program as well, doing devotion, right, so people can.
We've got so much budget, come on.
Well, we can do that through the church, coming at the church budget.
Okay.
What, 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 sorry?
Like a diva, uh, awareness and uh, you know, steer people away from it before they, before they go down that path.
As a form of sort of uh, community outreach.
Yes.
We can talk about that later, uh, at your uh, your own meeting, could uh.
Yes.
Perhaps.
Oh, yes, right. Oh, yeah, good, good idea, thank you, excuse me?
Can you think of like a catchy tagline for that, so we can use it at the meeting?
I, I would need a, I would need a little bit of time to think of that.
Something like snow more something.
Oh, right, cause snow is uh, cocaine as well, snow more snow.
Oh, it is.
No more sma- no more snow. More snow. No, no.
Say uh, say no to snow.
No, 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 no.
Say no to snow is going to have ring.
Don't be a pain, don't do cocaine.
Blow, blow away that snow, blow is also a.
Oh, yes.
See it, snort it, report it?
Oh, yes, right.
Snort it, no, no, don't do it.
See it, don't snort it, report it.
That's quite good.
Little mouthful there.
But it's a, a literal.
Sorry, Tom, did you have a suggestion?
I was like, like clean your nose.
That's not bad.
Right, but it could just mean uh, you got boogers, right?
I, I mean, it's good advice.
Either way, no, you're right, you're right.
Don't snort, report.
I say, that's very, that's very good, I like, I like that one.
Yes.
Don't, don't snort, report.
Don't snort, all right, all right, I do that.
Right, uh, so Daniel, you said you're gonna get this up your budget, so can you make sure we get an advertising campaign going for that, please?
Yes, of course, yes.
Find it out to all the businesses, get them in the toilets, that sort of thing, you put that down to the chatroom, please.
Yes.
Uh, for Daniel.
Wonderful.
Don't snort, report, yeah, make sure you mention it tonight, um, I'm conscious of the time, Daniel, do you wanna, sorry, Luchok, are you done?
Yeah, that was, that was.
Okay, um, Daniel, do you wanna go next in case you need to leave early?
Oh, yes, well uh. Well, I ain't got much to do, right?
Oh, well, let me, let me have a look at your actions once, huh?
Yes.
Okay, assist Susie with her glow up, okay, let, let's just put a question mark next to that one.
Yes, please do.
Organise the panel event, when's that happening? Have you got any further with that?
Well, we can do it today.
I need to, I need to have a PR session, I can't just go into a panel meeting without any training.
Oh shit, all right, well uh, yes. Oh, shoot. All right, well, uh, yes, I'll, uh.
I mean, how's everyone else feel? Would you be ready to go for a panel now?
No.
I think maybe we should, uh, do a, a, an advertisement, so people know that that's what they.
Yes.
You said you're gonna get a camera crew, Daniel, as well.
Yes, quite.
Yes, oh, shoot, that's right, oh, oh, but I ain't got that budget yet, right?
If it's not, if it's not done by the next meeting, expect to see yourself on a performance improvement plan.
Oh, right, yes.
Did you introduce Reginald at one of the town hall meetings?
Yeah, it was the last one, I think.
Okay, how?
Oh, no, it was the one before latest.
I was the last one.
Yeah, yes, one before latest. Oh, shoot, did. I don't think I, uh, introduced Tenra, did I? Lost opportunity. We, we can do that to next time you're, you're attending, right?
That's all right. I, I think a lot of people know who I am anyway.
Well, yes, that's what I figured.
Does everyone, does everyone know who Reginald is now, though? He's the business license officer?
It was pretty, pretty close, made pretty close.
I saw him at Pizza Best the other day, getting the.
Yes, quite. I've, uh, provided Reginald with, uh, his certificate also.
Oh, shoot.
Well, don't, don't, um, you know.
Can advertise cocaine way better.
Okay, uh, Daniel, the last thing was requesting a health check via EMS. Have you done that?
Yeah, yes.
Right, can you forward me on a copy of the medical report?
You wanna see my. Medical record?
Why would I be asking you to do the health check?
I don't know if that's, that's fair, dude.
Right, okay.
It's kind of a poison, all right?
We'll take this one offline, okay, um.
Okay.
Maybe we are, yeah, we are offline, but not.
Okay, um, let's take this one, one on one.
Right.
Just me and you, we'll talk about it separately.
Fabulous. I can't wait. I'm fine, right? I'm all good, right?
Yeah, was there anything else that you had to say before I move on?
Well, the. There was something, right? The, uh, the prices down there at Bama Mamas. I know this is a great concern to the police, and I mean, shoot, honestly, it's a great concern of mine as well. So they charging, they upcharging police thirty percent. Purely for the fact of being police.
Ah, okay. That's rather unfair. Why are they doing that?
I, uh, I did speak with, uh, one of the owners to find out what the issue was. Uh, there was an incident from months ago. Where, uh. Actually, you mentioned, uh, you mentioned when yourself and, uh, Woodco got taken hostage, you actually. Got the second suspect in that, uh, a couple of days ago.
Oh, really?
So everybody is.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How did, I don't know, did you do that? I thought that was a cold case.
Yeah, they, um, they were coming in for a, for a bail, for a, for another old case, and they forgot what they were coming in for bail for. And then started describing the other crime accidentally.
Oh, that is, oh, my lord, that is just excellent.
It's very embarrassing, yeah.
Idiotic criminal.
They should be our world's dumbest criminals.
Oh, yeah. Your voice went kind of cocky there, Daniel, you feeling okay?
Oh, but the, uh.
Yeah, yes.
Prices. Like, obviously, us and the P T have just avoided.
Was that you, Megan?
To Bama Mamas, but something that was brought up in the town hall. Is that apparently they make up prices on the spot? When the police price thing was discussed.
It was.
They just said that whenever they don't like someone, they just increase the price, they just make up numbers for them, which seems. Doesn't seem like that follows the rule of what's in the business agreement.
Perhaps, uh, perhaps Reginald could go in and have a look at their, uh, their business practices. Yeah, doing all this. Just try, try to the bottom of what's going on in there. Because we could fine them. Well, I think we're well in, within our rights to fine them if they, if they keep doing that.
Well, they would need some kind of official, uh, I don't know, cease and desist or something, right?
Yeah, Henry, maybe you can work on it with Reginald.
Yes, I'll, I'll put that to action.
Great. Okay, was there anything else, Daniel?
I think that's a bad idea, right? I've, I mean, I've had a busy month, I've not, I mean. Shoot, I mean, it's been a busy month, right?
Okay, well, and your budget request is still the same as last month, I assume, twenty-five thousand for this panel meeting.
How much?
Uh, we had twenty-five thousand now.
Yeah, yes. I'd never go there, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, because money isn't. That flush in the, at the moment, so.
Yeah, yes.
Look at it again this month. And sorry to inconvenience you, by the way, by nearly getting killed and having to take a little bit of time off for myself. Thank you for everyone who sent me a get well soon card and checked in on me, by the way, that was really nice.
Oh, shoot, you wasn't.
Sort of missing, so.
Yes.
I would have done if I'd, uh, if I'd known about it.
You wasn't awake.
Quite shocking that the police commissioner didn't know about the attempt on my life as the mayor. Well, I, I, I don't believe we had a police report about it, so, uh.
I thought it was an allergy situation.
The, the two separate incidents, Henry, believe it or not.
Well, with the allergy situation, you wasn't conscious for this bit, but I saved your life, Mayim. I saved your life. Why would I try to poison you and then drive your ass straight to the hospital, huh? That don't make any sense. Oh, shoot. I'm.
Daniel, I just heard.
Sorry, Reginald, does that make sense?
That you think someone else should be the mayor will step in for a bit.
Excuse me?
Right, someone tell, someone tell me that I, I didn't hear that correctly, when we were in the park, and Daniel said. That he would, we need someone else to be the mayor temporarily. I think he was just, uh, talking about, uh.
A good point.
Something bad happened.
Yeah, yes, in case.
Contingency planning.
Is that a threat?
Yeah.
Is something gonna happen to it? Is something else gonna happen to me?
My.
You have security now.
You're a little paranoid, right? You're a little paranoid. I think you might be having some kind of PTSD kind of thing.
Okay, don't put that in the notes, please, Henry. Roger, you're next. Um, was there anything you wanted to raise on the budget for PD? I, I, I believe I, we were, uh, we were, we were issuing, asking for a budget this, uh, this month. We'll, uh, we, we have things covered. Wow, interesting. Then how's that? Well, uh, we, uh, we, we don't need the, uh, we don't need the jackets anymore, as the, uh. Obviously, it's warmed up a little bit, but, uh, we, we've, uh, we, we, we've saved a little bit, uh, over the month, we're, uh, we're covering ourselves. When you're, you're threatened with a PD audit, eh? That's fine, Reginald, you can stand down. Come on, calm down, Reginald.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we, uh, we have things covered for now, and, uh, Luchuk covered everything else, so, uh, onto, onto Tom, I, I would think.
It should be for this month.
Yes, it's, 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 uh, not, not, not an ongoing thing, we'll, uh.
Yeah.
We will, we will need some money again at some point. Well, do a bit of forecasting so you can cover any, you know, future expenses. There might, there might have to be some ones you have to cut back a bit, you know? It's called life. Yes, we are, we are, we are, we are making cuts where we can. I mean, do you need that many police officers? Are there any, you know, that?
We need more, actually.
Yes, I must say, the, the, the police are doing such a fine job.
Yeah, yes.
All turned up.
Yes, one, one to be committed.
Town hall after someone fired the gun. Oh, we, we can't very well beat it.
That's how that works.
They ain't, uh, they can't see the future, Mayim.
I called it in when Davey was in the room. And they still didn't arrive before he shot the gun.
How, in between happening and the gun being shot?
He was just talking to me. It was a good five, ten minutes. I was on my own. That is a ridiculous response time. There should be someone stationed near the town hall at all times.
We, we don't really have enough, uh. PD to do something like that.
Let's, if anything happens to me, Huber's gonna pick up the reins.
Oh, shoot, I'm mine.
You, you have security now, don't you, Mayor?
Well, yeah, but it's. It's not the most courageous security person.
Uh, well, may, maybe get a few, right? Get a, see if you can get more than one. I'll just find someone else, maybe if he has someone else in his, uh, his company or something, that might have a look.
Yeah, yes.
Right, okay. Okay, well, good, let's just not ruin, you know, the good news that PD don't need a budget finally for one month.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, Tom, what's going on in the world of bins?
Um, well, we've, we've got a bit of backlog, who's. You see, like, we kind of took Christmas off because it got really cold and. There was like snow and I couldn't find any fucking bin bags on the ground because the snow was covering them. So, um, we just left things piling up a little bit. But I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm getting back to it now, um.
Is that why we've got so many rats?
Uh, uh, this just shows how important waste management is in the city, I guess, um.
Wait, are you telling me no one was collecting any sort of refuse for the whole Christmas period?
A time you can argue where, you know, refuse increases a lot. Who is, uh, who is collecting all the wrapping paper? There must be, there must be tons of the stuff.
Well, we're not collecting wrapping paper until like next Wednesday, but, um, if your normal bin day was on a Monday, that, that's now a Friday. And if it was a, a Wednesday, that's now a Tuesday, okay? But it's not the Tuesday next, it's the Tuesday prior. So if it's normally like your general waste and then recycling, we'll be, we'll be getting your general waste on the Tuesday prior. It's really simple, um. I, 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 but I, I, I'm still getting a lot of problems where people put things in their own bins and, and hiding their bins behind. Lot gates and stuff.
Yeah, you just don't collect the ones behind lot gates, leave them.
But then that, that's when the rats come, you know?
What about a skeleton key? For the, uh, for the bin man, bin boys.
I, I don't, I, I don't think we should be giving out, uh, keys to the city to, uh, to bin men.
Why, why not?
You'd, you'd have to start doing background checks.
I, I've had a bin, a, a, a background check.
Wow, you, you don't have to give a background check to anybody that's, uh.
They ain't got the budget to be doing that.
Listen, the only person who gets a skeleton key for this city is me, all right? No one else can be trusted in this.
You go to skeleton key? Well, hang on, what if, could I get one?
How are you going to the PD?
No, I don't just carry them around with me. The door was already unlocked, Luchuk, I don't know how you can't believe that.
That's all I can believe, I just, you just mentioned having a key.
Maybe I'll give you a couple of grand just so you can put everybody on a security training course, because that clearly is lacking here. A police station that's just been left unlocked. Sorry, back to the bins.
I'm sure that was good reason, Mayim.
Yes, sir, please, please continue, Tom.
Um, o- okay. Um, I, I'd say I've got a lot to catch up on, but we're, we're, we're doing okay, um. It would still be nice to, like, for more employment and stuff in the bins, and it's, and we, we do do, like, uh, we do offer, like, um. Kind of part-time arrangements and stuff. So if you, you know, if you ever fancy, like, helping out within the bins, you just need to work with an official worker, we can take you out. Um, but, but, but yeah, otherwise, it, it looks like a really positive year for, for twenty twenty-five in the bin world. It's very exciting.
Can you just repeat those refuse collection dates again, please?
Right, so, so if you're looking wrapping paper, that's next Saturday. Um, if you, if you're, you know, bin pickup was a Monday, it's now Friday. And if it was a Wednesday, it's now Tuesday, but, but if it's a Wednesday, you would, you would interchange between general waste and recycling. If it's the week that's normally a general waste for a Wednesday, that will now be the Tuesday. So just, just, just keep that in mind. It's really simple to remember.
Have you made it out of that, Henry?
Yes, of course.
Or do you need Tom to just say it again?
No, no, that's fine, I've got it down.
Have you put the wrong thing out in the bins? I'm not picking it up.
Yes, uh, so what actions are you going to take to catch up on, uh, this, uh, the backlog you have?
Well, well, may, maybe we could, like, do some, like, cash incentives to get some people, like, some part-time workers, you know, some seasonal staff to, to deal with the. The bulk of the work.
And get the cats.
Oh, and the cats, yeah, I've, I've to find cats in a bin somehow.
Right, well, yes, um, maybe we could do like five hundred pound bonus for every ten bags collected or something.
For, for ten bags?
Is that too much, too little?
That seems like a lot.
I mean, that, that, I, I'll, I'll take that bonus, Mayor.
A hundred pound for ten bags. Or two hundred pound for ten bags. It does seem rather a lot. Fifty pound.
How many bags can fit in one, fit in one garbage collection?
Um, it's about a hundred. I mean, you need to be really good to get a hundred in a, in a, in a lorry, but. I mean, I'm a professional.
What about five hundred pound fifty bags?
The same as a hundred pound for ten.
But why do we make this bag base? Why do we just say, look, if you go and take a bin route that you don't normally do, well, you know, starting. Price will be blah, and then you'll get.
Thousand pound for a hundred. I think that's the same, I think.
It's, it's, the mathematics on that is the sign.
But have you got any other suggestions, Daniel?
Well, uh. Shoot, don't they get paid enough? Honestly, I mean.
Well, this is more for seasonal workers, for as a one-off, right? Tom, sorry, what were you saying about?
To incentivize, well, what about, uh, what about ten grand for a thousand bikes?
Seems all right. That's a lot of bags.
Yeah, so what does a thousand bags, yeah, I think ten grand sounds pretty good.
That's also a large budget, though.
Yeah, we can't afford that, right? Why don't you say whoever helps you, their lunch at one of the fine restaurants around here is on us. Or they get to have, like, meet the mayor.
No, I'll meet them. Oh, you want to be made in random, uh, sanitation workers? Where are they gonna meet you?
What about a free bag of coke? What, what else are you doing with it? It's just stored in the evidence room.
Probably destroying it.
Yes, it, it does get destroyed eventually. In a month. I'm just trying to think how we can reuse.
Well, not drugs.
We'll give it to the, uh, hospital, right? Medicinal cocaine.
I think you're thinking of the wrong year.
No, they use cocaine.
I thought they stopped doing that a rather long time ago.
No, I promise you, they use cocaine. No, no, cocaine, it's a R anesthetic. They sprinkle it on the R.
I, I don't think that's. True.
I'm going to look that up.
I'm sure I, I read something about it. Look it up, right? But, you know, run the risk of, you know, uh, there gonna be coke problem in the EMAs.
Okay, well, I thought, I've got an idea. Why don't we give the cats some cocaine? And then they'll kill the rats quicker, right? They'll be all keyed up and they'll sleep. They'll be faster, surely. I think they'll just die, Suzie. No, if we just put a little sprinkle on.
If it's just a little bit.
Test subjects, you know, the dodgy ones, the ones that are about to keel over anyway.
Why not give it to the cops? Oh, hang on, oh, the bin man, give it to the bin boys, and then they get all.
A waste of a harmful and unregulated drug, Suzie.
We talk in economics here, right? That's all we do.
Leave them in the evidence room.
Yes, let's, let's, let's take cocaine off, off the table here. For now, we might find some, uh, use for them, right? Tom, do you think of some ideas for the bin bags, okay?
Yeah, I, I guess, a, a baggie for a baggie.
That is brilliant. That's a great thing.
What?
Yes, I, 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 I would rather not be giving out evidence, that's, uh, if that's at all possible. Right, let, let's just stick to financials or meet in someone on the city council, you know, big brand, just, just chat it up, make it sound sexy, okay?
I'll put that as an action for you, Tom, to get, uh, more people in. I'll put that as an action for you, Tom, to get, uh, more people enthused and, uh, becoming seasonal workers.
Make sanitation sexy.
Get people horny about coffee.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I'm, I'm all about that, I'm all about making it exciting, you know?
Well, if, uh, there was girls, okay, hear me out, right? So each bin boy.
This is gonna be the most misogynistic thing you've ever said.
Yes, I would, I would like to. Think about what you're about to say, yes, and just think, think, would you say it to a member of your family that's female? Just picture it in your head right now and then say it in your head. And then, if you would say it in front of one of your female members of your family, then you can say it.
Okay, I would like to, uh, redact, uh, my previous statement.
We're, I, I think we're all very thankful for, uh, you doing that.
Yes, thank you, Daniel, and, and, and if, uh, you know, you can use this exercise anytime you like, please don't, uh, leave it exclusively to, to these meetings.
Of course, yes. Yes, I know, I do.
Okay, um, wow, Henry absolutely just roasted you then, Daniel, sorry, I've just got to call it out, that was amazing, uh.
Well. No, he, he didn't mean it like I had.
No, of course not, I was just, just, uh, trying to help you out, of course.
Let's, uh, let's, let's move on, shall we?
Yeah, he's proud.
Can we please minute that you roasted him though, Daniel? I want that to be noted.
No, I won't do that. No, I won't minute that. She said Daniel, right?
Yeah, she does seem to have been having a bit of a tough time with names today, Susie.
Mayor, we go to from here, right?
Reginald, come on, give us a shout out, please.
Yeah, so, rather, rather busy month, to be honest, um.
Yes, yes, so.
Yes, I attended, uh, one of Daniel's, uh, town hall meetings, which went excellent.
Yeah, yes.
Um, you know, made sure everyone knew who I am. Reassured them all that the city council was working hard and their best interest and, uh, overall, I think they left a great impression.
He did very good, ma'am.
Daniel's done some great work there.
And the pub looked great actually, Reginald.
Yes, yes, we'd gone to that, um, so only that, we've got to the end, uh, I have been round, uh, collecting some business license fees. Had some success there, um.
Come on, everyone, round of applause for Reginald, doing his job, everybody, let's go.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
No, we don't. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's very good, right?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, he's, he did the job.
It was an honour, honestly, it was an honour.
All right, can you clarify which businesses, uh, you received from?
Totally, I was collecting from, um, from Pizza This, um, from Bahama Mamas, interestingly enough, which, um, I did have to get also tough on. They did keep playing the, um, oh, the owner's, the owner's, um, aren't you right now card, but I did remind them that, uh, a business license is a privilege and not a right and it can be revoked at any time and they were then clock enough to pay the fee.
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
Which, well, they, they did also, you know, um, mention that perhaps a bit more notice, that I was making the rounds would be helpful, which, um, is some, uh, advice I've taken on board. Um, I was speaking to, uh, Henry here, who has made me some excellent, um, documents that I can show to prove I am who I say I am, which should hopefully alleviate.
That should help in the process, yes.
Yes, yes, hopefully alleviate, you know, the issues I've seen before where people challenged my authority to collect business license fees. So fantastic work there, Henry, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
In terms of businesses, many of you may have noticed already, we now have a brand new pub open. The Three Hocker Boys Pub, run by Verity.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Yes, I'm going to expand on it, Susie. You've had your moment, this is mine. So I've had some chats with Verity, some excellent ideas going on there, some excellent events coming up. I won't say too much in case, um, you know, just trying to keep them under wraps, but big things brewing there, very exciting to see.
Yeah, it's quite good.
And I'll note some of our other businesses, I believe we are in the process of withdrawing their, uh, business licenses due to activity and, uh, failure to pay business license fees. Um, also a full list of businesses affected at the next council meeting, one seventy-three finalized. But, um, you know, out with the old, in with the new.
Yeah, so, oh, Henrik, uh, sorry, Henrik, could you just minute that, uh, Reginald roasted Haley out of, uh, the mayor there?
Yes, of course.
Yes, thank you.
What? No, what did you say?
I just needed to call that A out. Oh, I just needed to call that A out, right?
Daniel, do you realise that I'm your boss?
Yeah, well, yeah, he is.
Yes, of course, but we don't, we don't, we're not in a toxic work environment where you can't speak to your boss.
Henry, we're gonna be, there, we're gonna be talking about this, expect the disciplinary invite letter. Daniel, I've had enough of your behaviour towards me.
You said, you just done the same thing to me?
Do not raise your voice at me.
Can I issue you with one of these things?
No.
Oh. Baloney.
Have you ever heard of a hierarchy, Daniel?
I know dang well what a hierarchy is, ma'am.
It does actually raise a, raise something with their, with your, your potential debt that we've avoided, what, uh, what does happen if you are, uh, unfit?
Who?
Uh, you.
Where the mayor?
What do you mean if I'm unfit? It's not even a question.
If you had died in that, both of those accidents.
Well, I didn't die, so it's not something we need to look at right now, is it? But listen, my first key.
But you don't have to be dead, what if you lose your mind and you start acting all crazy?
Share what, what actually happens, because Daniel interrupted me, so.
Okay, all right, no, no worries. I'll be quiet, right?
Yes, we're, we're all part of the same team here, I'm sure we, uh, we would get by, all right?
Well, you know, I'm not that easily replaceable.
But who would replace you? That's why we wanna.
Things, things would go on, yes, things would be okay.
Who would replace you?
Excellent leaders here.
Yes, we just want to main, main, maintain the, uh, the running of things.
You are really, really keen to see who would be taking my position if I wasn't here anymore.
Well, it's important, ma'am, or even if you was here, we needed to, uh, li- listen, we just, who would it be? There's gotta be a har- it's a hierarchy, right? It's a hierarchy.
Do you think it should be? Who do you think should be replacing me?
Whoever's next in the hierarchy, whoever's next.
Who do you think that is?
Well, shoot, uh, I, I don't think it's me, is it? Shoot, is it me?
Do you think it's you?
Do I personally think it's me? I, are, are you asking me, would I feel comfortable?
Is it a yes or no question, Daniel?
If I had to, ma'am, if I had to, I'd gladly stand up and represent your best interests, I would.
Uh, Tom, what's that in your hand?
Um, just something a friend gave me once.
Looks like some old rubbish, yes, maybe, maybe throw it in the trash.
What was it? I missed it.
What is it?
It was, it was just something I got from a friend, Donkey, once.
Oh, fucking Donkey, what's happened to Donkey? I haven't got Donkey in a long time.
Uh, he is still missing at the moment.
Presumed dead.
Someone off, they seem to go missing or die, I promise you, it is a coincidence entirely.
Right.
Presumed, you know, no longer around to be a pain in our ass.
Right, well, uh, just to be very clear, Tom, Donkey would not be in the running, okay? Um, Roger, who do you think?
I was a Donkey from the other thing.
Me too, uh, it's not for me to decide.
Oh, everyone's questioned a lot, but no one has, you know, any sort of courage to tell me what they actually think. Reginald, what about you?
I think I would be, well, being totally honest, I think I'd be a relevant fit for the job.
Do you think you're next to mine?
Well, at least so.
To be very clear, I want to know who, when you think of everyone in this room other than me, who is the next natural leader for this position?
Ma'am, do you understand why we're having this conversation to begin with?
I just feel like you all just want rid of me, to be honest.
No, no, it's a lie, son.
We just want to make sure things work, uh, carry on working smoothly.
No, we're all to the same team here, Susie.
Obviously.
It's just preparations, just in case.
Why don't we focus more on how to prevent things from happening to me, rather than what would happen if something did happen?
Well, I, I suppose it would go to a public vote, but I, I think the, the worry is that, uh, bef- before that happened, uh, what, what would we do about it? Like, I suppose we'd just have to be a council.
Yes, luckily we have a, we have a, a well-formed city council here.
Like, what would you do now?
Yes, I.
Right?
That was a freak occurrence, ma'am. Freak occurrence, how many times has that happened to you?
Like what?
The David Trout thing, how many times in your life has that happened?
How many times have I, has someone tried to kill me?
Yeah, he is.
Twice that I know of.
Okay, and, uh, how many days are you being alive?
One was muffin related, um.
Oh, give me a break, please. I don't know, try to kill you, right? Okay, my point, but, so let's make it one, because it ain't two. Clearly, one time, uh, one die out of the tens of thousands that you've been alive, somebody tried to kill you, very right, I mean, at this rate, you're gonna be nanu before it happens again.
Oh, well, I, I love how it was so blows, like, if this was, if this was anybody else, you'd be very concerned. Why is that everyone up there?
No, no, we wouldn't.
We're all very upset about it, Susie, we're just looking to, uh, maintain things.
Well, Roger, I'm glad you've just piped up, because I want to know, is this gonna be investigated? Are your police officers involved, gonna be investigated for their late response to the incident?
Oh, what a waste of resources, ma'am, come on now.
If it makes you feel better, I'll, I'll have a look at it, but, uh, I can't, uh, I can't do a, a full investigation on something, so, uh, so, so in the past, we've, we've, we've already shot that case.
I, I wasn't on shift during that day, but, uh, I can assure you that officers always respond to everything as soon as they can.
Okay, that's good then, no independent review, but.
Ma'am, we all feel terribly about this, well, very, you know, none of us were happy to find out about this. We was all very concerned and very, uh, worried when we found out about this, okay? And it must have been very traumatic for you. Yeah, yes. Must have been very traumatic, right? You've been through a lot, you have. We get it, right? But you gotta keep it together, ma'am, you're the mayor.
Do not, do not even think I'm keeping it together right now.
No, you're, you're, you're doing, you're doing, you're doing an excellent job.
You're doing a great job, right? Ain't you doing a great job, y'all?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There you go.
I mean, look at me, I'm damn sight better than I was before.
Well, yes, not as bad as when Daniel made that up, that's for sure.
No, hang on, no, please, right? This is the, this is the opposite of sexy, there, I said it. This is the opposite of sexy, I've had my side.
Does the, uh, does the mayor need to be sexy? Is that a?
That was what we discussed. Sex sales.
Oh dear, um, I'm, I'm really sorry, I really must, really must run, um, actually we've got an, an electrician coming to fix, um, fix some lights in my apartment, um. Is there anything else?
Oh, shoot, right.
Where did Tom go?
I'm not sure, perhaps here.
Maybe a, a bin emergency. Maybe he's off to collect cats.
Maybe he saw cats, glad.
Okay, Reginald, thanks very much, keep up the good work. Have I thought I'd say that?
As always, as always, thanks all.
Stella works, so.
Listen, I just want to remind you, you, you are in the positions you're in because of me, okay?
Yeah, he is.
And the, and the hard work, of course.
And that's not a threat, that is not a threat, I'm just saying, just remember where you came from.
That's why we all care about you, ma'am. We care about you.
It's like, uh, like Henry said, we are, we are, we're a team, we're, uh, we are, we are all together.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm doing fine.
You're right.
Yes, and if you were to be not doing so fine, you know, you have the council to lean on, yes?
Yeah.
Listen, there's a man, there's, okay, ma'am, I want you to meet with somebody, okay? His name's Marvin O'Leary, he's a, uh, professional therapist, right?
No, I'm already meeting Clementine Harper.
Isn't he a detective?
She's a life coach. Yes, a private detective, ma'am, he's a therapist.
Well, it's too much to, to ask for both?
I don't want to talk about my feelings, I'd rather do life coaching, that sounds much less vulnerable.
Okay.
Let's not, uh, let's not have the man sharing their, uh, innermost feelings to a private detective, perhaps.
He can't do that, can he? He can't just say, oh, I'm a therapist, I'm gonna use whatever you tell me against you.
Well, I suppose, uh, he doesn't have any oath or anything that would stop him, you know, just.
Are you joking me?
Because he wouldn't be, uh, wouldn't go far enough, I don't think. I think he'd be legally entitled to tell anyone anything he hears.
He need, okay, we need to send that man cease and desist. He needs to stop.
What did you tell him?
Well, well, that's between me and my therapist.
It sounds like it's not about to be.
Unless he's, uh, an actual registered therapist that went through the whole process and was taking, taking an oath. This I'm not sure of, I don't know him that well.
I needed somebody to talk to about my dead brother there. Because everybody, well, you know, would, I'm not my dead brother, my, the, you know, the. Yes, right, as well, that as well. But also my, my, you know, the death of my twin brother and the revelation that he never existed and it was my loyal getting paid in revenge and ruining my life.
And you told this to a, a, a private investigator?
Yeah, yes.
Right.
Whereas I told it to what I thought was a therapist.
Sorry, Henry, can we just, we need to meet with Daniel, wait, please.
What the hell? Why?
Because your ris- your security risk at the moment is the city council, Lavenham Alpha.
Um, about my twin brother who, you know, well.
These things were, everybody knows about them, right? Like, it's not, um.
Yeah, he is. I may have told him something about, uh, my childhood that was very distressing for me, but it ain't no security threat, it's very, just very embarrassing for people to find out.
Yes, well, without trust, you wouldn't, uh, speak about anything that happens in these meetings with, you know, the general public anyway, Daniel.
Of course not. My jo- it's my job to keep secrets, right? It's literally my job. People come to me, confess all sorts of things, I can't tell nobody about it. I know how to keep a secret, please.
Fair enough.
Okay, yeah. What, what, what was that about aliens?
Oh, I, I was just saying about like, father, you were telling me about how you had that alien that was like, looking like you and was gonna replace you. And then, Luchak, you, you sent me a picture of somebody arrested that looked like me that was gonna replace me and kill me, and I'm, I'm just really scared about these aliens.
And then David Trout gets killed under mysterious circumstances, presumably. After he was exposing the whole thing.
Well, at, at the moment, we're looking into the incident, we don't know if it was an accident or, uh, otherwise, yet.
Right.
So, let's not go around saying that he was killed.
Okay.
We don't know yet.
Yeah, it's all right.
Yes, quite honestly.
Well, great deal of people apparently, ma'am, you gotta keep them opinions to yourself. You can hide them, sure.
It's very interesting how David Trout tries to kill the mayor and everyone loves him.
Well, he, he was punished for this crime, he did time.
Yeah, he was. Well, no, he was, he was arrested and served his sentence and, a- again, according to our investigation, he was trying to, or like successfully, I guess. Or like successfully, I guess, attacked, uh, a statue in your office. He wasn't after you specifically.
He had a gun pointed at me.
No, I, I get that, and it doesn't make that experience any better. It was obviously a horrible thing to happen.
Yeah, yes.
He was saying that his intention there was not to kill you.
Do you think that if that had gone to court, that would honestly stand up, oh, I wasn't trying to shoot you, I was trying to shoot the statue next to you, it's not my fault, I was shitty?
Well, isn't that what he did shoot?
Yes, because I've got.
And he was heard. Well, no, he was heard. A few days before, uh, or two days before talking about, uh, that statue. So it seemed like that was his plan all along.
To be honest, the joke, I made a choice not to discuss this with you. Roger, I was supposed to be ma- arranging a meeting where we can discuss things further because.
Yes, we can, we can do that.
Full transparency, I put in the complaints about you, the joke.
I'm sure you have.
Oh, fantastic.
I feel like you've made that very clear. Again, um, gonna repeat this, we cannot predict crime. Somebody talking about a goose. There is no way for us to predict that that person means a statue of a different bird that's in your office.
What a bad, big bulletproof bubble to make and live in.
Right, I think this.
You can have it straight.
Yes, it's.
Yeah, like a hamster.
Let's, let's, let's wrap things up.
Oh, psh.
Put myself out, right, if all the doors were unlocked, that one's not.
Okay. Mayo, Mayo, excuse me. Do you wanna come to the town hall, maiden?
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll sit at the back.
Do you, well, okay. All right, y'all, feel free to come up to the, uh, community maiden, right? It'd be good to show a, uh, solidarity, right? Like, you know, yes, we are one time.
Well, so.
Yes, I know, I know, I'll head out. Is that now?
Yeah, it's all announced on Berto's, I'll say the ten minutes from, uh, five minutes from now, how about that? I'll say ten minutes to let people arrive.
I'm gonna head up and open the door.
All right. Well, things considered, I'd say today is a success.
Uh, I guess so, because, uh, things are getting a bit, uh, more back to normal, which is good.
Yeah, yes.
Slowly, back to normal, but, uh, getting there.
What is the, uh, what is the procedure of perhaps getting out?
Yes, we're all in the way up right then.
We could, uh, perhaps if we have a look.
Well, not, not.
Uh, have you seen?
What, the park over here?
Yeah, he said we get up, uh.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Nobody ever uses that door, so.
Hey, Bacon, how you doing?
Why, it's right next to the car park.
Yes, we, uh, well, we usually go downstairs and people come in through the, the front and reception normally. Suppose this should, this should be for like taking people, processing.
Yeah, cause there's like a little scanner and stuff.
Thank you, so. All this fucking rhyme, all right.
Well, I, I will, I will see you up at your, uh, up at your church, sure.
I'd love that, okay, I'll see you there. You coming up, Tom?
Um, not, not today, but, um, I'm not sure. I've got a lot of bins to catch, you know?
Yes, of course, no worries, okay? Oh, fuck, I'm not on duty. The Verdi's around.
Hello, Verdi, how are you? How can I help you?
Hi, Mr. Verdi, it's, uh, Daniel Woodcock, I say, would you be, uh, free in about ten minutes to come and, uh, take the minutes at the, uh, community maiden?
Uh, I thought you'd never ask. I'm on my way and I've got, uh, food for everybody as well.
You're joking me? Oh, you absolute sight, man.
No worries, uh, I, I, I preempted that you might have absolutely forgotten, so I'm, I'm on the way.
Ah, totally forgot, right? I couldn't thank you enough.
No worries, I'm, I'm on my way, I've got Cheatham and, uh, a new lawyer, a, 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 a romp with me as well.
Oh, fantastic, I'll see you there, okay?
All right.
All right, bye bye now.
Bye.
Tonight, the goat will be appeased. Oh, no. Thought we got rid of this goat asshole. Uh, prison. Is that? Henry behind me. Reserve for Woodcock. Oh, my god. Yes, hello, hello, I'm.
Hello there.
Hello.
How, how are we doing today?
Yeah, not bad, not bad, thanks. You, you, did you spot the, uh?
Did you see, uh, your thing?
I did not do this wrong. I specifically say it, I don't want nothing like it.
Oh, I thought you'd be mad.
You're upset?
Well, I don't want people to think, you know, I'm obsessed about the, uh, parking spice.
Well, everybody has parking outside their work, so, you know, you should as well.
Thank you, right? But I mean, I don't wanna go, you know, people look at that and say, oh, what a asshole. I know that people just don't park there.
I don't think that's what they're looking at when they say that.
I think that's the last thing they'd be saying that about. I think it's perfectly reasonable.
Uh, well, yeah, you said, uh, I suppose you're right, but, uh, but I don't know, I wanna, it's to come across as a little more humble than that, right? Little more modest.
Now, look at that. Mummy and daddy.
Hey, don't you touch your radar, man, I've got, I've got my own.
Oh, shit, I left mine at home today.
Can we maybe go inside? It's, uh, absolutely pissing it down.
Yeah, go ahead, please. No, please, it's always open, y'all can go in there whenever. What a fucking shitshow. Andrew?
Yes, quite. You don't help, you know?
What do you mind?
All of your paranoia nonsense, you go straight to our head, she thinks we're all together.
Well, shit, I'm trying to give a bit of tough love, right?
Yes, there's a time, haha, but, well, no.
Yeah, yes.
You're a rational man, think of your head.
Well, yeah, yes, right. Well, it's tough on me as well, right? I don't, I hate to see it like this. All right, I'll, I'll try to, shoot, I don't know, I'll try to, uh. My primary focus is to make later, to feel good again, right? So I'll try to keep that in mind and, you know. I'm, I'm trying not to make it any tougher for, than it already is.
Yes, well, I suppose he has to come, so I turned to myself.
That's right. Only so much we can do inside.
Do appreciate that everyone didn't immediately point the finger at me when, uh, she was talking about the place. That would have made me seem very suspicious, so, so thank you all for that.
Yeah, yes, of course. No, yeah, you, you're right. Yes, hi, hi, the joke. Is it, is this car, is this? Somebody's vandalized. Oh, that's, uh, this is, uh, shoot, I don't know, this is quite a nice car, though.
Yeah, the color is. Nice.
Quite nice. Orange in the. Poink.
Yeah. Is it somebody you want, sorry?
Oh, somebody's painted, uh, it says revo- reserved for Woodcock on my car space here. I specifically have stated publicly, I didn't want nothing like it. And now somebody's come along and fucking with me, it's essentially graffiti, right?
Yeah.
I don't think it's coming off neither.
Why would you care that it says it's reserved for you?
Cause I'd, I wanna come across as a little more modest than that, right?
You have arguments on the parking space every week.
Yeah, yes, I was hoping people would just fucking learn, uh, anyway, all right. Oh, don't get me started on the. Excuse me?
Do you know why I've done this?
I have no idea. I have got.
Cameras appear or anything?
No, please. Them security cameras are useless. Absolutely useless. When they work, it don't do any good. Because people just wear masks.
Is there something happening?
Oh, somebody's painted reserved for Woodcock on my parking spot here. Which makes me seem like an egomaniac or something, bro.
I, 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 I wouldn't think so. I have reserved parking at City Hall.
Well, it's, it's very crudely drawn, uh, like it's very, don't look very, uh, looks, I don't know, I don't like it, right?
It's not like professional, uh.
No, I ain't professional.
A complete work.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I support the council, suppose. Someone's, uh, put some thought in.
Yeah, well, I wish they ran it by me first.
Yes, well, uh, maybe that, maybe they'll come and tell you at some point. But until then, uh, so when, when's this, uh, when's this meeting start?
All right, okay, let's get a start, please, we already liked. Come on, Ian, please.
I think the rain's off.
Yeah, yes. Oh, maybe we should take this up to, uh, uh, maybe go into the middle of the fucking forest or something, right? Hey, Robin, how you doing? Didn't the cameras get the wise cut up after an accidental murder happened at the church? Yeah. Yeah, more or less.
Well.
Good, good job you didn't wear your Mr. Bean one tonight, innit?
Yes, it sure is. Glad I had a bit of.
Oh, shoot, y'all noticed the, uh, bullet holes in the side there?
What is that? The, what, oh, on the outside?
Yeah, it's on the outside there. On the exterior.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's right. I'd very much like to know who that was and what they were trying to, uh, kind of message they trying to send, Mike. All right, shoot, Mr. Verdi, can I grab a bit of that food, please?
Right, what do you want? I've got cheese toasties and a, do you want a benta?
Is all, that is perfect, right?
How'd the council meeting go?
Yeah, you know, well, we went, went very well.
Do you want one of these, just in case?
Oh, I truly, truly could not thank you enough for that, right?
No worries, right. I can't stay the whole time, but I'll take the minutes as, as long as possible.
All right, okay. I, I don't, I don't expect it's gonna take too long today, all right.
Oh, this is a disaster. I'm not having a little.
He's dropped his food. Oh, please, could you pick that up? Excuse me, fucking hell. I'll pop my pill up here. I'll save, I'll wait till the end.
Which, uh, what's slippery?
All right, do I keep? Okay, I, I do. There's people out there, all right. All right, I see people are still arriving, right? Let's just give another minute. Oh, shoot, hi, Mr. Joel, so you welcome?
Oh, I liked, um, I liked your parking space.
Oh, don't, don't even talk to me about that. I did not do that, I had nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Thought you were gonna say I liked your, uh, stained up the other night.
Oh, I loved that also.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I've not stopped thinking about it since then.
Oh, shoot, right. The bit about the, uh, Dr. Seuss, sorry?
I was just gonna say, did you enjoy it?
Oh, yes, right. Once I was up on that stage, I felt alive. But shoot.
My favorite one was the joke about tentacle porn.
Oh, yes, of course, right.
Am I allowed to say that in the church?
Yeah, it's fun. Ain't no scene.
That, that's not a scene.
What, porn?
Well, it was a tentacle variety.
It's, I, I generated.
Oh, so that makes it all right.
Yeah, yes. Okay, welcome everybody, please take your seats. All right. Okay, welcome to the, uh, commu- Los Santos Community Maiden. I'm Father Daniel Woodcock, I'll be, uh, taking care of things tonight. Now, uh, so what we usually do here, people can come up, have their say about an issue they have in, uh, uh, in the city, right? Y'all got, y'all got a pothole needs filling in, you come here, we can talk about it, right? See what we can get there. I would also like to, uh, announce. We are launching, launching a, uh, cocaine awareness and diversion program. And we will be calling that Don't Snort Report. So over the coming weeks, you'll be seeing, uh, various materials and, and media about the dangers of cocaine and, you know, shoot, why you shouldn't do it. All right, I'd like to open this up now for, for members of the public, come on up and, uh, have their say, all right? Who'd like to go first? Oh, yes, try to, please.
Yeah, thank you, Father.
You're welcome.
Uh, so, uh, you know, bear with me, I'm just gonna speak for a couple of moments. Um, I just wanted to speak plainly, uh, about Davy Trout.
Right.
Davy, uh, wasn't perfect. Few of us are.
Really?
But to call him dangerous or malicious, uh, that's a betrayal of the truth. Let's not forget, this is a man who carried a greeting card for every occasion. From, uh, Sharon's bushes to Ken's trifle.
What?
Uh, he found humor in life's observities.
He's got a fame.
Even when life wasn't kind to him. Yes, he shot a bird statue, not the mayor. Reckless, malicious. Yes, he shot a bird statue, not the mayor. Reckless, malicious, not even close. He took a plea and he faced the consequences and that should have been the end of it. Mocking a man like Davy, he laughed at himself and tried to navigate his struggles, says more about the mucker than it does about him. Davy deserved better in life and he deserves better now.
But I mean, we also have to.
Remember him for his quirks, his humanity, and laughter he brought to this world.
No, you don't talk over me. Okay, we also need to consider the impact of his actions, right? Yeah, so, okay, fine, Davy was a very likable man and people loved him and won't know. But we have to consider the impact his actions took on people. We have to. We can't just sweep that under the rug now. Come on. Please take your seat, alright? Oh, yes, please, Maya. Ladies and gentlemen, you're Maya Suzy, Maya Suzy, right? Yes, please, give it up.
Thank you.
It seems not many people knew the man was dead, okay. Yes, Maya, please, you got the flow.
Just to echo what um, Daniel said there, you don't know the impact it's had on the people who are involved. I was in the room with Davy Trout when he pointed the gun at me, so I can't believe in this holy house that we're sitting in right now, someone could even defend his actions and try and talk about him like he's some sort of angel. Because he certainly wasn't. He was an attempted murderer and should be treated as such. Why is he being given so much leeway? He tried to kill the mayor of this city, your mayor.
It's true.
Tried to shoot a statue.
He did not, Verity. He tried to shoot me.
Is that what he went down for?
Like I said, we have to bear in mind the impact, the impact it's had on people.
Luchuk, Luchuk, can you come up, please?
He, excuse me? He tried to shoot y'all?
No, don't worry about it.
Huh?
Yeah, someone who uh, has tried to.
Please, everybody, give it up. Please, give it up, Councilman Luchuk, please.
I just need you to confirm on the microphone here, what Davy was actually charged with, please, thank you. It's in public, in the best, you know, public interest and all that.
Excuse me, my fucking throat.
He's charged, uh, well, it wasn't attempted murder.
He told me that he was, he was sent down for attempted murder of a government official.
No, that's not what I said. He was charged with uh, discharge of a firearm. Along with other related charges, but it wasn't uh, attempted murder.
Yeah, oh, yes, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Luchuk. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Maya. I mean, well, it's just a messy situation, right? And it's a shame that uh, well, I'm led to, well, the man had uh, anyway, alright. Yes, go, rest in peace, David, but also uh, shoot, what was you thinking, right?
Hi. Oh, bye bye, have fun.
Okay, yeah, oh, yes, please, Miss Verity, please.
Bye bye.
Hello, I'm Verity Royale from Free Hawker Boys Pub. Hello, everybody.
Yes, hello.
I, 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 I think I knew Davy, probably one of the best people in the city, uh, I was closest probably to him, probably his best friend, to be honest. And, and, and I think he, he wasn't very well and I think the way that everything went down is more a statement on the, the fact that he weren't looked after by this city.
Okay, alright. No, no, ma'am. Okay, dude, let's, let's leave comments about David Trout for the, for the uh, funeral, right?
What is this smear campaign? Why are you enabling this?
Smear campaign?
Can we uh, can we move on from this place and get to some important?
What do you mean smear camp? I just said, you know, sure, he was a good man, but we gotta, we gotta uh, bear in mind the impact of his actions. Cause there were people affected by that.
So promoting people getting counselling and support, you want that to be moved on from? You don't think that's important?
No, no, listen, right? We have, Verity. Oh, Verity, please. Who's gonna take my minutes? Oh, shit. Listen, right? Had the man, uh, it's, okay, so do we know that he uh, tried to get help? Or did he just jump straight to the weapon? As far as I'm aware, the man didn't trust shit, right? Otherwise, it wouldn't have happened, cause the city, regardless of what Mrs. Verity says, God, God bless her, the city would have helped him.
Didn't he have a serious head injury or something?
I ain't, I ain't a hundred percent on the detail. Well, he's troubled either way, right? And it's a shame. But come on now, smear campaign? That's taken a little too far. Alright, let's move on from this, please. Is she alright?
Uh, yes, she's just had enough for one day, I think.
Oh, shoot. He's gonna take my minutes, she, alright. Alright, does anybody else wanna, let's move on. Anybody else got an issue they'd like to uh, come up and discuss, please? Could now be the time to do it. And if not, shoot, I can be happier. It means city halls doing their job. Alright. Yeah, it's a round of applause to City Hall, please, shit. Well, proof is in the pudding, as I say, and here we are, steeped up to the neck in pudding.
It's something I wouldn't mind raising, if that's okay.
Oh, yes, yes, please, uh, Mr. Brompton, right? Please, come on up.
Yes, um, now, I was just wondering if there's any uh, if there's any transparency to any of the matters which uh, get discussed.
Oh, shit, okay. Luchuk, uh, you may wanna turn around, have a look down the uh, aisle here. What do you want, mad man? Steeped in pudding. My child, please. Please, my child, think about what you're doing.
What courage, stand back.
No, we in my house.
No, please just shut up for a second.
Oh, shit, okay.
Do you feel it? The weight of this rotting world pressing down on your chest. It's suffocating, isn't it? The rules, the order, all lies we wrap around ourselves to feel safe. But safety breeds stagnation. Comfort is a slow poison. The goat, the harbinger of truth, opened my eyes. Creation, real creation, demands sacrifice.
Was that before I after he went to prison for laugh? Okay, alright.
Daniel?
Okay. Shit, whoops.
You see, destruction isn't the end, it's the beginning. Every shattered bone, every broken soul is a building block for something greater. I am not a monster.
Oh, I think we're gonna die.
Chiseling away the decay to reveal the masterpiece underneath. You may hate me now, fear me, but in the end, when the dust settles and the fire cools, you will thank me. You will see what the goat sees, the beauty in the wreckage.
Sure we will, yes, of course, anything you say.
Daniel, Daniel, please be quiet.
You gonna open fire in a room full of civilians, chief?
I'm not, I am not. No one's gonna open fire.
My children, get down, get down!
Henry!
Henry! Get an ambulance, somebody call an ambulance. No, I need to pray for this man. Everybody step back, I need to pray. Oh.
We've got, we've got, come on, come, come back.
There's no EMS, you're gonna have to stick to hospital.
Right.
Oh, Jesus, Lord, please. Please look over this man, protect him from death.
Is, is there anybody you know?
Please remove the bullet from his flesh. Who, does somebody else need a prayer?
Transport him to the hospital, there's no, there's no EMS.
Get him to the hospital, please!
Just take him.
You just go.
Go!
Come on, we've got it.
Henry!
Oh, thank God.
I can't believe it. Kill him!
Well, no, I mean, if they can arrest him.
You fucking asshole! Now you can go bathe with your precious fucking gold, right? Oh, I'm, I'll kill him! Keep me back from this asshole! Put a little of this blood on my torch. Is everybody okay? Charlie, you okay?
Can we like usher people outside or something?
Is this man alright?
I'm, I'm fine, yeah, I'm good.
Oh, shit.
Uh, my meat is stiff, but that's a different matter.
Oh, shoot, you know what? I think he was just trying to shoot that bird. Yeah, you know what? I think he was just trying to shoot a bird. It's okay, everybody.
Woodcock saves you shit for another time.
Yeah, it's made in a joint. Oh, shoot, you okay? Is everybody okay? The bird!
If we step outside, you, you'll be outside at a moment, you know?
Alright, can everybody please, everybody please move outside, we're just gonna.
Alright, yes. Yes, alright. Fucking hell. So right, sir, the threat is gone, okay? Are you alright?
I'm fine, but where are the police?
They're just inside, they're collecting evidence, alright?
Okay.
I'm still in shock.
That's what I mean.
I did not expect him to actually shoot.
I did.
I'm so worried about Henry, I hope he's okay.
Thank the Lord Verity got out of here.
Did he do it because the um, the police got their guns out?
I don't know.
That was strange.
I can't get on a Verity. When you have finished recording, you may hang up. Oh my God, Verity, please tell me you're okay. Oh, Verity, I'm sorry, okay? Just please, please answer your phone, I need to know you're alright.
Oh, I don't know, yeah, cosmic coincidence.
Sort of blue, yeah. Blue tartan check thing going on here. Anyway, are you alright, Henry?
Yes, no, I'm fine.
You look a little bit shaken.
You don't look okay.
No, I'm fine, you know, he was just.
You sure? We could go.
Yeah, maybe let's go and get you like a cup of tea or something, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, or brandy. We've got brandy.
Brandy?
I've got whiskey.
Love a brandy. I got some Canadian one.
We don't have brandy at Bahamas. We got vodka or tequila.
It's up to you, do you want, where do you wanna go?
I don't know, I want a brandy. I want a brandy.
Let's go to Pizza This.
Get him to the hospital, please.
Okay, someone, is he okay? I feel like you should drive him, yeah. Oh, okay. Okay.
I can walk, mother.
It's alright. Who's mother in that?
Crawl, run.
Just motherly figure, alright? Nothing, uh, nothing weird, um, can you?
Oh my lord. It's over. Settle down, shit.
I'm just gonna skateboard back down to where my car is, cause I'd have been.
I don't, I mean, what the hell was that man thinking? Who was that?
Why is it two Henrys?
Oh, yes, right.
I'm a very safe driver.
Tell you what, that's gonna be some cleanup in there.
I ain't doing that, you believe me?
This meeting's officially over, isn't it?
Yes, I, I joined the meeting immediately after the uh, the shooting, right?
Okay. Maybe you should try and patch things up with Verity, just gonna say it.
I just tried to call, I'm worried about her. What if she's dead too?
I'm going to Pizza This, uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll be down there soon, alright?
Ooh, I've got something for you that'll help.
Is it a brandy?
Speaking of which.
It's not a brandy, but.
A lollipop.
Pops always help me when I'm stressed.
Oh, fucking hell. Oh, shit. Alright, I don't want the cops seeing me all off, all off my fucking face. How long's this shit last? Fuck. I'm glad I didn't take it before the fucking meeting, almost did. Whoa. Alright.
Wasn't there when we got here, was he?
No, I don't believe so.
When I got here, no. I didn't see him.
Henry, so when I went to check on Verity when she left, I passed Henry and he asked me if everything was alright, like, it was literally passed in the doorway. I didn't see anyone outside.
Must have been hiding.
Yeah.
When I arrived, cause I was a little bit late, he wasn't, I didn't see him, but he might have been sat in his car or something. I don't know.
Who is he? Who was it?
I don't know.
It was um, that goat fella, wasn't it?
Somebody's mentioned that on, on Boda.
Yes.
Oh, good. Well done.
Is, is it, is Henry okay? Is it okay to ask?
He's in the hospital right now, the doctors are beyond, I don't know what his condition is. Uh, okay, I'm, I'm gonna need to ask others there, but uh, probably detectives will contact you for state, specific statements, okay?
Alright.
Okay, is everybody okay?
I think, I think, no one else was hit, as far as I'm aware.
I think the mayor's gonna be pretty shook up.
Well, she's already dropped off.
She fucking drove off, we tried to stop her, but she was like, you know, in a state of shock.
She's fucking, must be terrified, bro.
Who?
Oh, you did? No, Charlie, come on. No, no, Charlie, must be mistaken.
Have either of you seen Henry leave?
No.
The, the church? No, this, that, you know what I mean?
Jared did the thing, I saw him get up and leave, yeah. I said I need to come and be like, oh, was everybody leaving?
Right, so he got up and left.
He got up and left, yeah.
And then he came back and went.
He backed into my car!
Yeah, next time I saw me and a gun on him.
No, I didn't.
So, alright.
Henry, you come into Pizza This.
Yeah, like I said, the detectives will possibly be contacting someone here for statements later.
Alright.
Yes.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system. Five, two, zero, three.
Find out whoever the asshole was who painted on my parking spot.
Oh.
Let them know, right?
Okay, I'll do that.
Yes, I'm, uh, I'm sorry, I'm just a bit shook up, right?
No, that's fair.
Is Nancy Ryan?
Haven't seen her.
Am I gonna be allowed in the Pizza This?
As long as Jay's not fucking there, we'll be fine.
Oh, that fucking grass? Yes, alright.
If you see him, literally run out the building, I'm not joking. Other than that, you're fine.
If, if he comes around, say, "Woodcock, I told you to fuck off."
Yeah, yeah, we'll do a little scene again.
Alright, okay, yes, alright, I'll see you down there. Oh, shoot, don't it.
You okay, father?
Yes, I'm, you know, my heart's racing a mile a minute, but, uh, I think, uh, I think I'm okay.
Alright.
Yeah, yes.
Make sure you, uh, keep your breath steady.
Oh, yes, thank you, yes. I mean... What was he thinking?
I know. Sure we'll get to the bottom of it, though.
Yeah, yes. Fuck, we've, uh, yes, sorry, uh, we've met before, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
Sorry?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes. No, of course we have, sorry, I've, for a second, I had... Yeah, yes.
And, uh, behind my mommas, I believe.
Oh, yes, of course. I was trying to place where, how do I know this man? Yes, no, thank you, I mean, shit. When you came in there at the end, I thought shit, I was... I thought you was gonna run up behind him or something, right? But then you would've got your safe key. Yeah, yes, you know, yeah, right. I was petrified, I wish I might, I should have charged the man, give it all I got.
No, sir.
Yeah, yes.
That is not your place.
Yeah, yes, probably have gotta, would've got everybody killed. Well, at least showed, hopefully Henry ain't dead.
I'm, uh, I'm sure the hospital are taking good care of him.
Yeah, yes, well, matter of fact, I might, uh, pop up there on my way to Pizza This, make sure he's, you know... He ain't dying.
Maybe best to give him a little space for now, it's, uh, bullet wound ain't gonna heal itself in that amount of time.
Well, yes, you, I suppose you're right.
If, uh, I'd say there's probably surgeons with him.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right.
Understand your concern, but, uh, I'd give it a minute.
Yeah, it's alright. No, you're right, you're right.
Go and, uh, go and relax, get some food.
Yeah, yes.
Couldn't get the person under control. Don't want him going into shock.
Yes, you're right. Oh, I mean, in the house of the lord of all places.
It ain't right.
No! Bullets whizzing past my head!
Yes, sir.
No.
Close call for, uh, close call for a few people, I would have thought.
Yeah, yes.
Gunshots are scary at best times, in close spaces, double that.
Oh, shoot. Thank lord, our police force were so courageous. Able to eliminate the threat. Oh. Alright, let you, you go ahead down Pizza This?
Uh, I think I'm gonna go on duty, but, uh, I may be down there shortly.
Oh, shoot, yes, right, okay.
Gonna go and actually get changed into my uniform.
Oh, yes, do you need a lift? I don't see another car here, I think that's Henry's.
Oh, I'm, just, uh, just around the corner.
Oh, yes, right, okay. Well, God bless you, sir. Oh, shoot.
Thank you, father.
I work on my breathing. Yes, I will do, thank you, sir. Jesus! He shot first, I wonder. Sir Henry! Um... This doesn't feel super direct, let's, uh... Whoops, fuck, let's mark the map. I have my fucking why. It's funny that he actually shot the guy who, who plays the goat. Played the goat. Who the fuck's that? Ah, Mr Deeksine, are you okay?
Aight. Yes, it's old, old hat for me.
Oh, right.
It's just, you know, bringing back a bit, bringing back a couple of bad memories, that's all.
Oh, shoot, right, okay.
How are you holding up, anyway?
A bit shook up, right?
Yeah, I can imagine.
Yeah, yes.
Look, I know, I know we don't always get off on the right foot, but if you wanna talk about it, just, just give us a shout, cause...
Oh, shoot, eh?
Yeah, no, I mean that.
Alright, thank you. Well, shoot, I mean...
It's not easy.
I'm still in shock, right? Bullets whizzing over my head. Can't believe it.
Yeah. It's, it's, uh, it's, it... Definitely is an experience getting shot towards.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah, uh, I mean...
So you've experienced that more than once?
Yeah, uh, I can't really talk about it.
No, of, of course.
It's one of them things, you know?
Yes, oh, shoot. How do you deal with it?
I'll be honest, you, you, uh, you, you don't really. You just sort of accept it and... Just try and live your life.
Yeah, yes, right. I guess it just kinda gets better over time.
Yeah, the, the way I like to think of it is like... You get, you've got a finite amount of grief or anxiety or whatever, and then as, over time, the, the capacity you have increases, rather than the amount you've got decreases.
Oh, yes, right.
So it's the same amount, but you can just deal with it better. It's not really healthy, and I would suggest going and seeing an actual professional if you're really, really struggling with it.
Yeah, it's right.
I mean, you know, it, it, it helps to talk regardless, so I just feel free to reach out if you, if you're struggling with it.
Alright, thank you, man, I appreciate that.
Uh, yeah, I see Josie's gone in, so...
Yeah, it's right, alright, shall we head in? I mean, I won't see a, a therapist, Mr Marvin O'Leary, but it turns out maybe, uh... Well... I mean, maybe, maybe he ain't the best person to be talking to, let me just say that. Well, I don't wanna say that neither, so I won't.
I mean, it does sound a bit like Nick Valens on The Fallout, so I couldn't really take him seriously.
Oh, I see.
Josie, you alright?
You're alright, dear?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just worried.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Where's, uh, Henry and Chatham?
They're on the way, I think. I dropped them off at, um, their cars.
Oh, yes, right.
Henry's quite shook up, so god knows what he's doing.
Yeah, yes. I'll have the man a brandy ready to go, please.
I know, I'm going to.
Yeah, yes.
Can I get you guys anything?
Uh, whiskey, two whiskies for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that it.
And for me as well, please, I'll pay, right?
You shall.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, please, and, uh, you know what? Let, let me get a, uh, salami pizza, please. You want a pizza, Mr Deeksine?
Oh, if you're offering, go on in.
Alright, salami sound good to you?
It's my favorite.
Alright. False whiskies, uh, two pizzas, please.
No problem.
Oh, shoot, exactly what this town needs, a fucking homicidal maniac.
And the church as well.
Yes, of all places, can you believe that?
No, I didn't, I thought it was like sacred ground, I didn't think people were even allowed to do stuff like that. Well, you're not allowed to do any crime, are you?
Well, yes.
On a higher level, weren't allowed, you know?
Yes, you, but you're right. But see, the thing is, the man he was there on behalf of, this goat, right? He's a, he's a, like a, uh, evil asshole, like a prophet from, from Satan, something like that, right?
Uh... I don't put much stock in that.
So, I didn't actually get, understand anything he was saying.
It was a load of old conspiracy gaff.
Yes, I was too busy shitting my pants to be, be quite clear with you.
I was quite upset, I was trying to get out the, sort of like, behind the police, and I tripped on one of the queues.
Oh, yes.
I just hear you laugh at yourself.
Yeah.
That was quite funny.
I mean, of all the situations to do it.
It was the worst timing ever, yeah.
It's just, that's just Dixon for you.
I enjoyed that.
As long as you wasn't hurt, right?
Well, I smacked myself on the head a little bit, but I'm fine.
Oh, are you okay?
Yeah, I mean, they teach you how to fall when you start doing, um, jiu-jitsu, so...
Okay, alright, uh...
It wasn't so bad.
Is it cash or card, father?
Card, please.
Hang on, let me do some maths.
Yeah, it's alright.
Oh, god.
Right, I'll put them on the counter.
Thank you.
One of the salamis is slightly older than the other, that is because I made that for the meeting.
Oh, you did?
I only made like one, cause Verity asked me to, to just bring some pizzas, cause she'd brought some toasters or something.
Yeah, yes. Oh, shoot, what do I owe you for the kaidren?
Oh, no, it's, well, I've given you one, so you, that's fine.
Yeah, it's alright.
I can just eat that, um...
Fantastic.
Don't worry.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, Verity's gone to bed, she's, uh, she's not having it tonight.
Oh, have you talked to her?
No, I tried to call her and it went straight to voicemail.
Yeah, yes, I'm hoping she's okay.
I think she's just a bit emotional.
Yeah, yes.
God, I've still got that flipping meal from Hornets as well.
Oh, shoot, that whiskey went straight to my head.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, it's better.
Think we all need it.
Oh, yes. Now some comfort food.
They seem to be a little upset about Davy tonight.
Yeah, well, not everyone knew. I had to tell Vi.
I was gonna say, everyone seemed a bit shocked, I thought it was common knowledge, but...
Was it yes, no, was it yesterday or did that night's day before I had to tell her? Cause we went to, um, we went to the pub together.
Maybe we should have like an obituary, although there's not that many deaths, is there?
Not really, but, well, none that, none that anyone sort of knows.
Daniel.
Well, we gonna, I mean, I've talked to Verity, she's organizing, uh, a funeral for the man, right? And she's asked me to, uh... To officially, you know, do, do it.
Have you got a date yet?
No, we ain't got no date. And I mean, I'm happy to, right? I mean... I understand the man wasn't a bad man, and it show he had his problems and won't know, but, uh... You know, I can't, you know, the mayor, people don't understand, I don't think... People are sympathetic enough or something, the mayor... It's really, it's fucking throwing that lady, right? She's really suffering because of that.
I'll be honest, Luchuk's told me a completely different story, so I'm not really sure, do I believe the chief, chief of police?
What's he told you? What's he told you?
He said that he didn't ever point the gun at her, he point, he, he shot a bird statue and she's overreacting.
Regardless, the mayor, if that hadn't happened, the mayor wouldn't be, uh, traumatized. She's traumatized from that, from that situation.
But she is really milking it.
No, she's really impacted that har- hardly, right? And we need, I mean, see, where's the sympathy? Where's the sympathy? Why? Cause she's the mayor, she don't get no one.
I have been sympathetic with her, I have been.
Yes, yes, no, of course you have, boy.
But then she makes it all about her when someone's died, I think that's a little bit selfish, don't you?
A little bit, yeah, I'll be honest.
Well, she, you know, I imagine if I was in her shoes, I might be a little relieved to hear the man has died, I probably wouldn't be celebrating it out loud, but I'd probably be a little relieved.
But just don't fucking say it, especially if you're not the mayor.
I've, listen, I've, she's traumatized, right? I think she gets a little bit of a free bias here, at least for one time. So, is, it was inappropriate what she said. I know if you're over...
It's extremely inappropriate, yeah.
Yeah, yes, I assume we're talking about the comment she made at, uh...
Yeah.
The pub, right? Yes, I mean... I think it's, uh... Understandable.
Sorry, I'm just sending, um, Henry a message.
Which Henry?
The one in hospital.
I feel like I should go up there and give the man a prayer.
I'll get well soon. Well, it depends, are you gonna make it all about you, or are you actually just gonna go and make him a prayer?
All about me, what do you mind? When do I ever do that? Why would that be the first thing you ask? No, okay, let's not pray for the man, you're right. I don't want people to think I'm making it about me.
Well, that's what I was about to say, I think, you know, if the mayor's being like that, then you wanna be the better person, don't you?
What do you mind?
Not making it all about you.
What do you mean making about me?
Well, you just, but, hello?
All I said was I was gonna go up and give the man a prayer.
Yes, but what will happen is you'll barge in, they'll all be panicking anyway, cause he's gonna be on like life support and stuff, you're gonna be there.
Yeah, yes.
You're gonna be there harping in the background, and...
On behalf of God, yes, right?
Yeah, and it's gonna be distracting everyone, and Henry's gonna be there fighting for his life.
No, I, I don't, no, no.
Be the center of attention, don't you?
No, I don't, I hate that.
You, you do, you hate it?
Unless I'm doing like stand-up or some shit like that?
Oh, speaking of, uh, Dixon didn't hear your tentacle, Joe. Oh, speaking of, uh, Dixon didn't hear your tentacle joke. Will you tell her?
Oh.
It really, it will really make your day, won't it?
Well, Dixon walked out. When Dixon walked out?
Look, I'm a student of comedy.
Right? Well, why'd you walk out?
Uh, because.
You, you just wanted to have a breather outside, didn't you?
Yeah, I was a little bit stressed.
Alright, well, now that's, I mean, no, there I go, getting making all about myself.
I, I'm sorry.
Can't help it, can I?
It wasn't meant to be.
Josie literally asking you to tell you one of your jokes.
Yeah, it's right. Well, I feel like, uh, no, no, I, I, I. I gotta be on stage with the microphone, you know what I mean? No, no, I can't just, uh. I don't even go to, I mean, no, I can't just, uh, say it like, you know, out of context and. Without a cr- you know.
Out of context when you said it, to be fair.
Well, no. I was doing my say it.
Well, Dixon, you'll never know.
Now, I'll do it next time.
Oh, so you're gonna repeat it?
Yeah, you can't be doing the same jokes over and over.
No, that's what stand-ups do, right? They.
Yeah, but not to the same people.
Or in the same location.
Yeah, you went to like mix it all.
Oh, well.
Anyway, if you wanna go and pray for him, you can, but just don't like get in the way of people.
I'm gonna go up there, I'm gonna rip all these colds out, I'm gonna say, look at me, everybody. How about that? I'm gonna suffocate the man and say, I'm the Henry now.
What's the word?
What you wanna do is get the forceps and try and pull the bullets out yourself.
Oh, shoot, yes. Well, it's probably better than, I mean, he's got no care up there. There's no fucking, uh, EMS on duty. No doctor.
I know.
Alright, I'm gonna head up there and just make sure he's okay, okay?
Send us, send him my love.
Alright. Well, I assume he's unconscious. Alright. Well, pray for him, will you?
Will do.
Alright, thank you. Just, just yes, okay? Thank you.
Goodbye.
Bye-bye, and thanks for the pizza and the drinks.
No worries, bye.
Baba. Oh, excuse me. Jesus, where the fuck is everyone? Let's get the most direct route here. No. Fucking hell, this needs a wash. What if I just do this? Nah, don't do that. Alright. Oh shit, look at this. The whole fucking four, ah, they've blocked it off. Oh, shoot, how's he doing?
He's stable. He's not conscious, but he's stable.
Oh, thank the Lord. Can I go in? Can I go give him a prayer?
Uh, you could go in, yeah. I'm not sure what room he's in at the moment.
Alright, I'll track him down. Thank you, thank you, officers.
Uh, yeah, if you could, yeah, escort him there, yeah.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Oh, Commissioner's out here.
Shoot, Roger, you okay?
Yes, yes, I'm, uh, absolutely fine.
Oh, shoot.
Is, uh, everybody good?
I can.
Yes, well, I hear the man's stable, right? I'm here to give him a prayer.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure that's, that's allowed yet, but, uh, I can ask. Can I have a quick word first?
What the issue is, is that they're in major surgery.
With my?
Yes, yes.
Yes, of course, please.
You were, uh, you were looking after the mayor, were you not?
Y- y- well, yes, I stood in front of her.
That's, uh, it's very good. It's very noble. Did you, did you see, uh, what happened to her? She seems to have vanished.
I remember, uh, she was there and then when I came out the church, I seen her driving off.
Right, okay.
Yes. I don't think she did. I mean, I was so cold up in, uh, there was blood everywhere and. Oh, shoot. Nah, I didn't notice, right?
Yes, I'm just a little worried, cause obviously she was in that rather odd state beforehand. I can't imagine this has done any good.
Yes, I tried to call her, no way into her, right? Went straight to four smile.
Right, would you, you would say that, uh, we're good friends? You could, uh, keep assuming that perhaps?
Well, yeah, yes, right. When she's in her right mind.
Yes, but, uh, just, uh, just see if you can get a hold of her at some point.
Of course.
And make sure she's not, uh, not had, uh, an episode or anything like that.
Yes, of course. Yes, no worries. You can count on me.
We'll ask if, uh, if they'll let you in for a prayer.
Oh, yes, thank you, sir. I'll wait here.
Yes, just wait here.
Alright. Alright, he's gonna go make sure it's okay, I can go back.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, you got the man, right? You know what's happening with his ass? Is that something you can talk about?
Probably not right now, even if I did know, sir.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes, no fair enough. All that acts.
He's in major surgery as well, that's all.
Yes, of course. Man with shoulder and his back. That's what it looked like anyway. I can't say for sure.
Humphrey, Von Humphrey's out of surgery.
Oh, who's?
Suspect is currently.
Oh, why bother? What did I say?
Cause a person's still a person, you know, crime or not.
Well. It's more than he deserves, let me tell you that. I know you ain't expect a holy man to say that, but, uh. He was there on behalf of the devil. He's my enemy. She don't leave me alone with that man in the room.
Don't think we will be.
Yeah, yes.
Temple? Your car is the one on that blockade. I moved it.
No, no, oh, thank you.
I'm still, I'm still in shock.
Tim, if you could follow me.
I'll take over.
Oh, yes, thank you, darling, yes. You okay, final? Oh.
Yeah, there's something to respond to.
Yeah, yes, no fair enough. Fucking animals in this town.
Which room is he in?
Right, for, uh, I'm gonna do it quickly.
Alright. Yes, hello.
Right, we're, we're gonna let you in, but, uh, I don't want any funny business.
I ain't gonna make it all about myself, like people insist I do.
I want, I want, uh, I want tensions low in there. I don't want any, uh, I don't want any, uh, any aggression.
Is this Henry or, uh, the other asshole? I'm talking about, I'm not giving that other asshole a prayer.
Oh, I see. I, well, that, no, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, he wanted to see Henry, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, yes. I'll suffocate, uh, where is he? I'll suffocate him. No, no, you know what? No, no, I'll give the other man a prayers. I'll give the other man a prayer as well. Yes, you're right.
Yes, but, uh, perhaps you don't go in with, uh, with that.
Yeah, yes, right. Oh, yes, alright.
Follow, follow the commissioner going.
Oh, yes, okay.
All life ends in misery.
This is a great time to be dancing, y'all.
Thank you.
He's, uh, he's kind of sedated and, uh, under at the moment.
Yes, alright. Alright. No, Henry. I can't believe that happened up in, up in that holy house, right? Goes to show that man was down behalf of Satan his self. Alright, Lord, you know the deal. Please look after this man. Please let his recovery be, recovery be swift. And easy on him. He's a good man. He didn't deserve this. Please, please bring your wrath down upon that asshole came in with the gun aimed at this man's head. Everybody else involved, let them, uh, be able to deal with this. Emotionally. As best as I can with your help. I mean. Alright, he should be fine now.
Do you, uh, do you like to say something at the, perhaps at the door, the suspect, if it's, uh, something you want to do?
Yeah, it's alright. We'll see you soon, though, Henry.
Right, he's, uh, he's in there, but.
He's in here, right? Hey, asshole.
Excuse me, excuse me, that person's recovering from surgery.
He is performing a blessing, but, uh.
Oh, blessing? No, no, I can't.
Didn't sound like a blessing.
I gotta know if I can do a blessing on this man.
Well, if you can't do anything, maybe not shout at the, the recovering person, please.
Alright, gold. Oh, please.
Religious? Do we know if this person is even?
Yes, he's ver- oh, believe me, he's very religious. Lord, please, uh, oh, Lord, please, oh, please look over this man. Oh, please, would you make sure he's okay? I'm, I mean.
Are you, are you winking?
It won't.
It, it's what? You just look. Winking, crazy.
Won't?
Nobody, someone was winking. I did see winking. It was very, very clear.
Uh, he said winking, right?
Winking, aye.
Yeah, he's winking. You know, wink.
You looked up to that, up to that ceiling and you gave a wee wink?
No, no. No, I meant every word I said, right?
Like that? You mean like that? What's he doing that?
No, no, wink with an i.
Oh, right.
No, no, no. Master Biden.
Do you get that? Do you, do you get that? That is quite good. I did enjoy that.
Wink with an, oh, shoot, yes, right. Oh.
It's, uh, that's quite good.
Well, you know, you wouldn't wanna wink with an heart, shit. It fucked that eye up completely.
Did we, did we double check if both of them had, uh, insurance?
I don't think insurance is going to cover mad man like that.
May- maybe pet plan or who, who else, who else, who else does insurance? Oh, of, of course, yes, cause we value human lives more than animal lives.
Then why do you care about this man?
We're not here to cast any moral judgements.
Yes, yes.
You could though, right?
No, we couldn't. That would be very illegal.
That would be very illegal.
No, you could, but you'd, you'd still have to, you'd still have to give him the best treatment available, but you could still personally. But personally, you gotta have an opinion.
Please don't tell me how to do my job. Thank you.
I ain't, ma'am.
How do you, uh?
Doctor, doctor, please. I, I ain't tried, doctor.
We, we, we don't, we don't come to the, the church and tell you how to, uh, wink at do- uh, God.
Right. Well, wink a dog.
Sorry, what did you offer me there?
Don't come down to your job and, and tell you to stop winking at God. I need to put that in my next, uh, stand-up routine.
I'm, I'm doctor doc. I, I'm sorry, what is happening here? Is this, is this priest harassing me?
Uh, I think it's time to go, Dan.
No, no, I'm here to make sure. Okay, I did the prayer. Okay, I'm leaving. I'm leaving, right? And bless y'all. Yeah, okay. Alright, well, bless everybody for the work you did. Y'all, I mean, it could have been a lot worse, right?
Father, you, father, you know what would really help us right now?
Yeah, anything, sir. Consider it done.
If you could clap for us.
You want me to clap for y'all? Yeah, show.
Is that not a thing you do on Thursdays?
Oh, well, today's Thursday.
No, very good job. I'm talking about the police. Cause I mean, they saved everybody's life, putting that man down.
I need you to clap. I need you to clap for us.
For what? For saving Henry? There, bravo.
We do.
Not all of it. No, I shall not applaud you saving.
We do. Could, could you, could you clap, please? It's all worth nothing.
Alright, okay, I will. Yeah, yes, I mean, y'all take care of me as well. Shoot, I love the, uh.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you got over your, uh, you know, this person is innocent until proven guilty and I'm, I'm glad you, uh, agree with that.
I was, I seen it. I know he's guilty. I ain't a code of law. I'm a witness.
Innocent until proven guilty.
Yes, I ain't a code of law. I don't have to presume shit. I seen it. I seen it.
So you need to see stuff to believe it?
So what? Do you think it's a lie when I tell you that man shot up the fucking church and almost killed my colleague in there?
I wasn't there.
Right, right. So you ain't, okay, Luchuk, when Luchuk says it, do you believe it?
I, I, I wasn't there.
Right, okay. Alright. I feel like we're, we're all being called liars, right?
I, I, I don't, I don't think he's doing that. I think it's.
Alright.
Just, uh, a little misunderstanding, but let's, uh, let's, let's.
Yeah, it's misunderstanding.
Let's, uh, let's get out of their, their business.
Alright, okay. Well, God bless you in the work you, you do, alright? I know Kai says he's very good at what he does. Alright. Okay, if he's ISO, right? Alright, I'll be on my way now. God bless y'all, okay?
Yeah, let's, let's go here.
I mean, no one else is shown, right? Just the asshole and, uh, and Henry?
Uh, it seems to be that way, yes.
Okay. Oh, God bless. Thank the Lord.
Would have, uh, would be nice if the Lord could have stopped that, that man's gun working.
Well, you know what they say. And it explains why, why, why he let it happen.
What is it, uh, what is it that they say?
Well, Lord works in mysterious ways, right? There's a point to it. We just don't know it yet.
Perhaps it's some sort of a test.
Oh, undoubtedly so. Yeah, it's hundred percent. Alright, then.
Thank you for, uh, giving Henry his blessings.
Oh, please, my, my pleasure, right? I'd do it a hundred times over. Alright, well, thank, thank you again, alright? I'll leave y'all to it.
Yes, remember if you were, if you do speak to the man, let me, uh, let me know.
Of course, right? No, you'll be the first to know.
Yes, thank you very much.
Alright, to, to take care now, please. God bless y'all.
Thank you, thank you.
God bless you as well, officer.
You see.
Did you get a wee lollipop? Did I give you a lollipop? Oh, crazy.
There was, uh, sorry, there was, there was talk of lollipops?
No.
The fuck is your pro- How you doing, Jen? You got out of there just in time. Right, he's got instinct to storm out. Uh, oh, Verity's gut instinct to storm out has never let her down. Um, there's fucking tons of people on. But, uh, yeah, I'm thinking it might end today. Jump on his runny. I should have. Poured holy water on him when he was dying, uh, laying there dying. Not sure what I missed. Looking forward to catching up on the VOD, right? Yeah. Hey, hey, rat. How you doing? Fucking hell. Yeah, it was definitely something. I won't spoil it. Yeah, I need to watch that back, yeah. Yeah, it was pretty crazy once all the fucking. Felt so quick. Yeah, yeah. It, it definitely happened all very quickly. Alright, I do wanna, uh. Kinda do wanna stick around, but I think, um. It's fuck all for me to do, all things considered. And I probably should, uh, take care of a few things. I know what happened, but not sure how, uh, how, who. Yeah, right, right. Yeah. There were, um, a lot of gunshots, bullets fizzing past me farting edge. Is his sleep still fucked? Yeah, it's pretty fucked. Um. Pretty rooted. So, uh, yeah, I need to really get that under, under control. Hey, hey, Ryan, you're dad. We don't sleep. Yeah, that too. Justice should never come at such a cost. Shit. I've seen Luchak in a hole. Who's Dom McQueen? Um, Woodcock started that meeting asking the police if they have seen the bullet holes. Yeah. Brain's blown out with a fucking bitumen. Sleepy dad, dad club represent. He about to go on his runny. I'm, I'm debating, um. Whether I should, because it is still early. There's tons of people around. Um. So I don't know. I need to, uh. Uh, do a few things today. And hopefully get a little bit of sleep in. Because, uh, I slept fucking. Like all afternoon yesterday. Um, or evening, like early, yeah. Then I had two hours sleep last night. Got up, jumped, jumped on HFT. Works for me. I get to watch all the launcher streams and it's, uh, not me being irresponsible. Yeah, true. I may get that sleep. Came on real early today. Sit on, sit in a park, yeah. Yeah. I probably should bugger off. Um. Just that fucking, uh. Uh. What do you call it? Fomo? But I mean, what else, what else can I do today? I should at least send out a tweet as well, I guess. Um. Hey, Ezdog, it's supposed to be thirty-seven today if you are planning to mow. I'm definitely planning to mow. Maybe I should do that this of. Although it's only nine. I bet the sun's fucking hot though right now. It's warm in here. I got the door open and everything. Yeah, I hated storming out, um, but I needed to have one successful storm out without coming back. Nah, yeah, fair enough. The Davy Trout thing, very divisive. I'd get out there now then. A mow and then a dip in the plunge pool it is then, yeah. Absolutely. It's been fucking great. Exactly. The pool was lovely yesterday, really fresh and it was such a perfect swimming day yesterday. Yeah, it's very nice. Um. Lum baby absolutely, Lum child absolutely fucking loves it. No spoilers, but do we know who did it? Yeah, yeah. Um, do you want to know the player? Who the player is? She's a water baby for sure. Yeah, she loves it. Okay, look forward to watching it back, yeah. Yeah, it was pretty, um, pretty intense. Hmm. Ronnie's apartment is burnt to a crisp from his laptop fire, so leave him to it. Alright, let's send a tweet. Um. Uh, the events. The events? Doesn't sound right, um. Maybe I should just wait. Does anyone, uh, does anyone know a good cleaner? I think we can all agree. Uh. But. Yeah, what's a good Bible passage for this? Think we can all agree that. Um. Oh, look who it is. You absolute menace. Sorry for defacing the church with Henry. Yeah, the walls are now painted Henry. The Lord is close to the brokenhearted and save those who are crushed in spirit. That's not bad. Is that an actual, that's not actually from the Bible, right? Tory blood is a stain you can never get out. Defacing Henry. It was his shot in the chest. Ha ha. Just in the back. Yeah, that's what it looked like. Is that, is that, um, how it was played out, right? The blood is too rich. Well, aim for the back. They know what, uh, rat is R P'd. Yeah, definitely the wound appeared on, uh, to be on the back. From my perspective, but, um. I think it, it's, uh. What do you call it? Um. Local, isn't it? It's not the same for everyone. Yeah, from the back through to the front. Some stayed in. Apologies for derailing the meeting, um. We were just finishing up, uh. Henry Brompton. Had just gotten up to, to say something. Hell of a way to me to, to, uh. End a meeting. That if the shooter, um. What a crowd too, yeah. The Lord works in mysterious ways, sometimes through angels and sometimes through terrible aim. Praise be, we're still standing. Bet plenty will come to the next one. Yeah, that's, yeah, that one's ever coming to another meeting. Um. Some of us face our greatest test today. Um. Some of us have. Passed. But I fear some may have failed. Uh, that's the right. Passed. Yeah. That's right. It's not P A S T. That fucks me up. Can never tell what's right. Pass. That, that's right, yeah. He's so wise when he's not being disgusting. Yeah, Woodcock's not been very precisely. He's the thing of his female family members before talking. Have you ever done proper confession sessions with Woodcock? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, I used to do them all the time on Ignite. Uh. And, um. I've done it a little bit on here as well, especially with Tammy. Tammy sticks out a lot as being. A lot of the good Woodcock has done was to do with Tammy, I feel. Because she actually, she'd come to the church and, you know, be like, well, fuck, you know, I've been in trouble and. Um. Oh, Yugi, yeah, Yugi, Yugi's done confession, yeah. Um. Just to keep a borderline inappropriate, do a reply of, anyone know what gets the blood stains out of wood? Yeah, I was, I was gonna say like, anyone know a good cleaner? Not enough church time of late. Yeah, I've spent fuck all time in the church. Um. That's right, that's, I mean, I'd say ninety percent of my time for like months was spent at the church. People would constantly be coming in and out. Charlie got Woodcock to bring back absolving sins, yeah. You know, for the right price. Peter did, I'm gonna go and kill someone, uh, confession, yeah, yep, yep. Yeah, that's right. And after Tammy's death as well. Um. That may have, uh, I don't know if that was necessarily confession, though, more of like a. You know. Forget exactly. I think it was after Tammy's death, right? When everyone was all butthurt about it. Joined in September, so I've only really seen him wandering around angry at people. Um. That's, hang on. We face our greatest test today. Some of us have passed, but I fear some may have failed. Um. Uh. It has always been the way. Yeah, you never used to wander around, it all happened to you, yeah. Not made your crim character either, yeah. No, it has many. But the, um. Fr- uh, Frankie, right? Is it Frankie? It's Frankie, isn't it? I feel like I might be getting confused. Which is funny because every time I saw him, I'd be like, oh, uh, Frankie, right? We faced what could prove to be our greatest test, uh. Cause I wanna say some of us have passed, but I've, but I fear some may have failed. Cause it's kinda like, who the fuck are you, cunt? We face what could prove to be our greatest test today. Nah. Some of us face our greatest test today. But then I say some of us again, is that awkward? Um. How did I originally have a, ah, fuck now, I don't even know what I. Are you sure we didn't mingle at Avenue? It's a good tweet, don't overthink it. Maybe very non-memorable, like Charlie chips penis. Isn't Charlie, i- isn't it basically law now? Charlie's fucking. You know, he's packing. We are non-memorable, what a choice of words. We have instead of some of us. Well, I wanna imply that not me. Oh, no, I'm just a fucking idiot. No, 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 sorry, I wanna imply, um. That I have, but not everyone. Whereas I think we would imply everyone. I don't think it's law. We'll need a lawyer to confirm, hey? Charlie's always catching strays, he's just the sweet boy. He's a white schedule. You have. Um. A difficult. We have faced a difficult test today. We've faced a difficult test today. The city has faced. City has faced a difficult test today. Some of us have passed, but I fear some may have failed. Um. The Lord hasn't. Hi, Mr. Josie. Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Josie.
Hear me?
Sorry?
Can you hear me?
I got you, yes, yes.
Can you hear me properly?
I got you properly, right.
Sorry, I was just asking if you had any updates.
Oh, yes, uh, well. You didn't hear from me, right, but, uh. He's, uh. Well, Henry's fine, the, the, Henry's fine, but they.
Henry's fine?
Yes, Henry's fine, but they, the, the other man is fine as well.
The guy who was shot is fine as well?
Yeah, he is. Can you believe that? And when I say fine, I mean, uh, stable condition, right? They both in stable condition.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yes.
So they're gonna be okay? Well, obviously, Henry, I'm kept bothered by here. Is Henry gonna be okay?
Henry's gonna be okay, the other man, uh. Well, hopefully the Lord takes him over the heart or something, right?
Yeah, I think, um, other Henry got called away to deal with it, so hopefully.
Oh, right. Yeah, he's right, well, I hope the man got his brand at the end.
He did, he did, so hopefully he's gonna go in there and not negotiate at all, um.
Yeah, yes.
Well, thank you for the update, I just wanted to, to catch you before I go to bed.
Yes, no, uh, thanks for the call, right? I think I'm, uh, I'm gonna retire as well. I'm working on a, on a, uh. You know, I should probably send a tweet out or something, right? I'm just trying to think of what I should say.
Just, you know, say that you thought so with, with Henry and. Yeah, I don't know, you're gonna have to figure something out.
Yeah, he's right. Oh, no, yeah, oh, shoot, yes, oh, my thoughts were.
Maybe lock the doors next time, I don't know.
No, 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 no.
Don't worry about us all being a target.
No, no. I don't lock them doors, I'm sorry.
Even with six police officers there, someone still managed to get shot.
Yeah, he is. I was terrified, Josie.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you.
Oh, the, okay, okay, all right, okay, bye-bye.
Speak soon, bye.
Okay, bye. Hands it. Hasn't abandoned us. Um. But perhaps he wonders why some of you have abandoned him. Is that, is that too harsh? Tweeting Bahamian City, sick classic councilman move. Uh, where's the Ringo love? Peace and love. Say that in his voice, then tweet it. What, there's saying in Woodcock's voice? The city has faced a difficult test today. Some of us have passed, but I fear some may have failed. Lord hasn't abandoned us, but perhaps he wonders why some of you have abandoned him? It's so him. Love it, might make people wanna repent a bit. Yeah, that's definitely what he's pushing for. Alright, full send. The Wii Saki comment, yeah. Recorded and put it on trendy, oh, I should have. Or post a video to Birdy. Should I, should I just record, record him saying that? Yeah, definitely need to post more videos. Get, get the trendy up and going.
Cool car alert, cool car alert, cool car up, let's cool car.
A fun night in Bahama Mama's.
Jay's all about the fucking trendy, my masterpiece. Imagine seeing someone just ice skating with this, just blank look. Blank stare. Oh, yeah, that sounds fucked on this one, it's a shame. The whole fucking Gary situation cracks me up. Alright, alright, okay. What an evening. Alrighty. I think that'll do it. Surely people are buggering off slowly. Uh, let's finish this pizza pie. Okay. Let's, um. Little Caesars. That's a, that's a pretty good one. Alright, let's, uh. Go see what, uh. LS finest are up to. Weirdly topical, yeah. Thanks for the stream, thank you. You're very welcome and thank you. Uh, what's today? Buzz D. So, um. Yeah, I should be back tomorrow. Thanks for the stream and the opportunity to defend Davy, yeah. No, you're very welcome. My pleasure. Davy Defense Corner was fun, yeah. Yeah, that was pretty heated. The whole thing boiled and boiled until it fucking, you know, reached a, um. Uh, explosive, uh. Climax. And I mean that as a, as a climax. Not as an orgasm. Alright, bye-bye everyone. Raiders happening, bye.
Is it you, see you on the chase? Is there any?
Just me on the chase.
Is there anybody else that?